Again there, so.
Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. I, for the record, am Vice Chairman Mo's Dunkle, currently presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Wayne Benner, Ivan Reymar, Scott Torpey, who is absent, Reed Weber, and Will Mitchell. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic which stands with the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we proceed with the business items on our agenda, I would like to first welcome our new Commissioners Reed Weber and Will Mitchell. Welcome. And, um, uh, with Vice of with former Chair John Hastings' departure and the makeup of our commission having changed with the appointment of our two new Commissioners, we will take this opportunity to elect new Chair and Vice Chair. I will begin with the election of a new chairman. Would anyone care to to make a nomination?
Mister Chair, uh, Acting Chair, I would nominate you, Mo's, for Chair.
Thank you. I would accept the nomination.
Is that a second thing?
That is a second.
I'll second that.
Um.
Grant Simmons.
Um.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations. Um, I have been nominated as your new chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, congratulations.
You.
Um. Thank you. I believe this is my fifth year, so it's about time, right? Okay, uh, moving on, we'll now move on to elect a Vice Chairman. Would anyone care to make a nomination?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh, nominate Wayne.
I would second that. Are there any other nominations? Okay, um, there's no other nominations. Uh, Wayne Benner has been nominated be as Vice Chairman. Are all in favor?
You didn't ask if I would accept it.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, congratulations to our new Vice Chairman, Wayne Benner, who will now preside over Commission meetings in my absence. Um, let's see, moving on, uh, we need a approval of the previous meeting minutes. Um, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Removed and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, next on the agenda is matters from the public, general public comments. We'll now proceed with matters from the public. If you would like to speak on a topic pertinent to city business, now is the opportunity to do so. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please just do so and hand it to the staff. Sign-up forms are on the table where you enter and staff over here will accept those. Um, those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted on the wall just outside the chamber's entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Do not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff. Do not be disorderly um or disruptive. No name-calling, no clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the Commission cannot take testimony on any specific planning or land use-related matter or application outside of a public official public hearing. This this comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You're welcome to contact the mayor or city staff during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during matters of the public record, uh, at this time, or anyone who has raised their hand on Zoom?
Yes, Mister Chair. Um, first up, we have Jennifer Alderman-Brown.
As she mentioned, Jennifer Alderman-Brown, city resident. I was here a couple weeks ago and spoke, and I just want to come and reiterate my opinion regarding paid parking at City Beach. Um, I think the treasures of Sandpoint should be free to everyone in the city and the county, irregardless of their income. If that means that we have to increase pay outside of the city beach, I'd be all for that. Um, but keep the keep the beach free. You guys had mentioned maybe using a plate reader. If they go in, you know, give them four hours. Two hours is definitely not enough. Give them four hours free. If they go over that four hours, then make it be a stiff fine. I know forty bucks, whatever you want. But if they can go down for part of a day and not have to pay anything, what a treat that would be. There's nothing else here that's free. They can't go skiing. There's, uh, you know, even to go out hiking, we're gonna have to pay to use the Sand Creek Trails. We're gonna have to pay to use the Bay Trail. Not everybody has the money or the vehicle to get outside and go into the mountains and do that. You know, we all sat in here and said we'd be willing to pay, and I certainly am, but some people just don't have it in their pocketbook to do so. Um, and I think I heard mention of maybe a a gate to get into the city beach. I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's just snobby. People don't move to Sandpoint because we're snobby. They move here because we are who we are. We're not Tahoe. We're not Jackson Hole. We're not Vale. Um, we don't need to be necessarily improved. We just need to be maintained. I know all those parking lots need some T L C, charge higher to pay, but keep the city beach free.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Cox.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. My name's Jennifer Cox, and I'm from Clark Fork. We all know that, uh, recently, despite an assessment that two hundred and forty-four parking spaces were initially assessed as needed for the resort in at fifty-six Bridge Street, that there was a waiver granted so that only one hundred and forty-four parking spaces were required, and this is clearly not sufficient. During the last zoning and planning Commission meeting, it was made clear that the Commission does not know what the resort's plans are to handle the overflow of parking, which is a significant concern. The Commission also seemed to indicate that there was no opportunity to fight this waiver because of the Inlu Parking Code. Please note, per Code nine five one, General Provision E, minimum or maximum parking space requirements may be reduced or expanded by the Planning Director upon completion of a parking demand analysis. Please note the strong use of the word "may." Clearly, the reduction in parking could have been denied, and it wasn't. Also, according to the meeting last week, the lieu and fee paid was four hundred thousand dollars by the resort. Per City Code nine five eighteen D, the parking requirements set forth in the Parking Code may be satisfied in whole or in part by the payment of a non-refundable parking improvement fee of ten thousand dollars per space. Doesn't this mean that the resort should have paid one point ten million dollars as one hundred and one required spaces were eliminated versus a mere four hundred thousand dollars? It has come to light also that in addition to the one hundred and eighty-one hotel rooms, the restaurants planned, and the event center, that twenty-seven condos will be built at the resort. This became public now is because they were put on sale earlier this week online, and while that has been removed from Zillow, you can still find the information online. Did the original parking analysis include the twenty-seven condos? If not, perhaps the fee paid should have been still higher than one point ten million dollars. It has been stated that there is no relationship between the hotel resort and parking fee plans in Sandpoint. This is false. It is wrong to provide a sweetheart parking arrangement to a rich developer and then ask members of Bonner County to pay parking fees to fix the parking issues in Sandpoint. Issues that the city government with the resort have guaranteed will be worse in the near future. The community needs to know why the resort is paying so little when we are asked to pay so much, not just in parking fees, but with a creation of more challenging access to downtown Sandpoint, an area that we all love. And I also would like to add that although I live in Clark Fork, when my husband and I came out here, we checked out Sandpoint. We fell in love with the area because of the climate, and I specifically found fell in love with downtown Sandpoint, the restaurants, the beach, the great market, the farmer's market. We initially bought property in Ponderay and later sold it because we could get lake or riverfront property in in Clark Fork, but we love this area. We're here all the time. Thank you.
There's nobody on Zoom with their hand raised, Mister Chair.
Okay. Um. Okay, well, that concludes the matters from the public portion of this evening's meeting. We'll now move on to old business. During our last meeting on January twenty-first, city staff provided a presentation on parking management. Community Planning and Development Director Jason Welker is with us this evening to provide an update and a summary of the public comments received to date. I will now yield the floor to Mister Welker.
Thanks, Commissioner Dunkle, and congratulations on being appointed the new Commission Chair. I think you're probably the senior member of the Commission now, so it'll be great to work with you. Um, just a very brief update on the, uh, public engagement that we've done so far. The P and Z meeting two weeks, was it two weeks ago? Two weeks ago was the the first kind of opportunity. We had about twenty to thirty people in the audience. We had almost two hours of public comment that night and took a lot of notes. I summarized those notes for you in a in an attachment in your agenda packet tonight. Um, we've received loads of emails at City Hall, uh, with feedback as well. Um, those were included in that summary that you received tonight, and based on the feedback we've received, we've made some modifications to the policy. And again, just to clarify, this is in the development stage right now. This is not a final draft. This is just proposed. Um, we are continuing to work with our citizen committees and commissions. Next week, this will go, uh, sorry, last week after it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was presented to the Sustainability Commission. We had a good discussion during the meeting last week. It, uh, will go to the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee next Wednesday and then to the Parks and Rec Commission for an hour and a half long discussion next Thursday. It was only been briefly introduced to the Parks and Rec Commission, but we're scheduling a full meeting to to discuss with that Commission next, uh, Thursday as well, since the largest parking lot affected is, of course, within a city park. Um, there's no timeline for when this might come to City Council at this point. Uh, it's all based on the mayor's priorities when he thinks this is, um, ready to bring to Council, but it it's just a a work in progress right now. We're we're working through the the policy. Um, and again, there's a lot of a lot of the concerns we've heard are about implementation questions, you know, license plate readers, um, credit, uh, will credit cards be required? Are these going to be old-school meters? Am I gonna have to get up from my spot on the beach and go back to my car and, you know, put a new sticker in the window or something if my two hours is up? Th- those are just questions that we are not ready to even, you know, theorize on right now. The implementation of a policy is is much further down the road, and I can pretty much commit to this Commission tonight that there's gonna be no rollout of a policy in the 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 next year. This is something we're looking at for the future. So we're just at the very preliminary policy stage right now. Uh, the public engagement, getting all of our citizen commissions and committees involved. This is the second update to you. We do not have a timeframe for when this might go to City Council at this point. That's gonna be up to the mayor. So I'm just gonna share a, um, table with you that shows what has maybe, um, yeah, thank you, Clerk. What has changed in terms of the fees and what we're envisioning? One of the, um, very, uh, the one of the common threads of feedback we got, and this was mentioned by Commissioners two weeks ago, was the issue of boats. So we always knew that, uh, boat launch fees were gonna be have, were gonna have to be something that we addressed with with parking fees at City Beach and, of course, at the, um, at the Memorial Field Boat Launch as well. So we've put in some boat launch fees here. These are basically benchmarked against other communities in North Idaho. Uh, all of all of Lake, um, sorry, Lake Coeur d'Alene's public boat launches are now, uh, paid-to-launch sites, including the city of Coeur d'Alene's public boat launches and the, uh, Cootney County Public Boat Launches. So this is something that the state has actually expressed interest in at Sandpoint, taking the lead on rolling up boat launch fees in Bonner County. We we are the, um, the state or the county in Idaho with the most amount of water in the entire state, and we are also the only county in Idaho that doesn't charge boat launch fees at our public boat launches at this point, despite most of the private boat launches around, all of the private boat launches around here are charging boat launch fees. And of course, when we start to charge for boat launching and for boat trailer parking, we're going to naturally see more parking available for vehicles at City Beach as some of that, uh, boat traffic will choose to go to, uh, you know, other boat launches that are either pay or free elsewhere in the county. So we have included, as you can see, some, um, Idaho resident and out-of-state resident boat launch fees here. This is not based on Sandpoint residency, rather, um, state residency. This is how other cities and counties in Idaho charge boat launch fees, and you can see those numbers. So annual passes would be available for Idaho residents who wish to use the the two-city boat launches for fifty dollars and one hundred dollars for out-of-state residents. This this essentially reflects what's being charged down in, uh, the city of Coeur d'Alene. You'll also notice that there's, um, an additional footnote there that vehicles with trailers, uh, totaling more than twenty feet in length would basically be charged twice the the hourly rate that vehicles without trailers would be charged since they take up twice as much space in a parking lot. So at City Beach, that would look like a a six-dollar-per-hour parking fee during peak times and two and four dollars per hour for vehicles with trailers during off-peak times. And if those vehicles have a parking pass, a a resident parking pass or a non-resident parking pass, their free hours would be, you know, applied. So you'd get your free parking, and then you'd pay for the hours beyond which your your parking pass provides in terms of free parking at the, uh, relative relevant parking lot. So let's go back up to the to the to the city resident and the non-city resident annual passes. Um, we heard a lot of feedback that that went into the, um, proposed, that the latest proposal here. Um, you can see that, you know, I heard Commissioner Dunkle last time talk about the idea that, you know, perhaps these passes are priced too low. Um, but we heard that, of course, the most common piece of feedback we heard, including from, uh, Ms. Brown just now, is two hours wasn't enough for free parking at City Beach. Not many families come down and spend only two hours at City Beach. So the 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 latest proposal is to increase that to four hours at City Beach for resident parking passes and three hours at other city lots. So that that was probably the most common requested, um, feedback we've received is is more time specifically at City Beach for those, uh, parking pass holders. The same pass essentially would be available for non-residents for twice the price. This is, of course, governed by the, as I explained last time, the land watering, uh, Land and Waterways Conservation Fund regulations around, uh, charging resident and non-resident rates at park facilities that are governed by the regulations of the Federal Land and Waterways Conservation Fund, which our City Beach and our Dock Street, that's the Windbag Marina parking facility, are governed by those regulations. So if we're charging, uh, Sandpoint resident, or sorry, if we're charging non-residents anything, we have to charge residents something, and the ratio cannot be more than two to one. So that's how we got to the fifteen and thirty dollars there. I'm still getting feedback from a lot of different people and conversations and in emails around these, uh, other types of parking passes as well. Um, the downtown business pass, this this is this is something I'm open to more feedback on as well. Of course, I think we need to consider, um, you know, the 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 use of our off-street parking facilities by people who work downtown and whether that's really what they're intended for. Do we do we wanna provide parking downtown for business employees, or is parking downtown primarily for business customers, people who are coming in to shop at the stores? So that the idea behind the downtown business pass, as we explained last time, is that for those who require the convenience of parking extremely close to where they work, we wanna give them a passive option that allows them to come park at that city lot, which is right in the middle of our downtown commercial district. For those who perhaps that is not that high of a value to them, those those individuals can park at the free parking across Fifth Avenue at the I T D lots or elsewhere, um, in the commercial core where there are several hundred free all-day off, uh, street parking stalls. So the incentive here is not to, you know, make life harder for downtown workers. It's to make life better for people coming downtown to shop because we wanna keep those parking stalls at that city lot primarily available for people coming to, you know, have lunch at Joel's or to to run into U S Bank or to, you know, go visit one of the local businesses downtown. Whereas right now, that lot's around ninety percent occupied during weekdays, um, primarily by people who park there all day and then go to work. So the so the the idea there is just to free up more spaces again for to improve convenience for the 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 people who come into town to to use our, um, either our amenities or our our local businesses. The Marina Occupant Slip Pass, this this, uh, was based on some community feedback. You might have seen a letter to the editor in the B today that suggested this, um, that Marina Slipholders, uh, if they're getting, you know, twenty-four hours of free parking at City Beach or all-day free parking, perhaps a pass that better reflects the value of that. Um, so that the proposal to increase that fee slightly to one hundred and fifty dollars to better reflect the the value they're getting for that. If they if Marina Passholders, um, require all-day parking, a a pass is available to them. And then we've got those boat launch fees, and we've looked at those. So there's really no other changes at this point. Um, there's been a lot of question about, you know, resident versus non-resident, and just to, uh, re- reiterate what we discussed two weeks ago, it's really not about where you where you live, it's about where your property taxes go. And, uh, some of the feedback I've been getting from city residents in particular is that our property taxes, at least some portion of them, are already going to maintaining public infrastructure in Sandpoint. In fact, all of them are going to maintain public infrastructure and services like police and fire in Sandpoint. So charging us for parking is really taxing us twice, and there's a lot of validity to that. So the, um, extension of time for those resident passes, the city taxpayer passes, and recognizes that city taxpayers are already paying around, um, I did the calculus, around forty dollars per head for for parking in Sandpoint. If we look at the three hundred thousand dollar cost of of maintaining our off-street parking facilities, that doesn't include the maintenance of city, of sorry, on-street parking. That's for our five hundred and five off-street stalls. So knowing that there are already costs imposed on city taxpayers for the maintenance and eventual replacement of all of our public parking downtown, uh, that that contribution through property taxes is being recognized through this cheap, um, city taxpayer pass that provides what I think most people would say is ample amount of, uh, time for most of the city residents' needs when they come downtown to park, that three hours or four hours. Um, and of course, just to clarify, I think a lot of people think that if you stay beyond, you know, the two hours of free parking, you might get a ticket or something. That's not, uh, something we would envision happening. It would be you get two hours of free parking and then any be anything beyond that, or your three hours or your four hours of free parking, anything beyond that you pay for when you leave. So it's not that there are gonna be police going around writing tickets or towing cars that stay longer than two hours. And and the idea that, you know, staying two hours at City Beach, that's not long enough. I agree. Most people come to City Beach for more than two hours, but if you're a county passholder and you come to City Beach for four hours, you you're not being told to leave at two hours. You're just gonna pay for two hours instead of four hours if you're a pass passholder from the county. So I think there's just some misperception that the two hours was like a hard limit and you would be forced to leave, or you'd be given a ticket beyond two hours. It's not that. It's that you'd be paying the two dollars or the three dollars for time beyond which your parking pass allows for free parking. So again, um, this was not meant to be a detailed presentation. We did that two weeks ago. I just wanted to give you this update, and I'm sure this is gonna change again before it comes to Council in the future. So any questions, I'm willing to happy to take them. Um, otherwise.
Jason.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the mechanics. So it's an annual pass.
Mm-hmm.
With a flat fee. But it's charged on two-hour increments based on the two-hour rule, meaning it's a two-hour pass, right?
Which pass are you talking about?
Oh, sorry. I wasn't reading the right row. Um, apologies, my monitor's not working.
Oh.
I I was I was, I was looking at two different cells together. Sorry.
So do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I got a question.
Commissioner Reimer?
Uh, yeah, um, so, uh, I I see on the page following that that we have a, uh, using these ratios as a baseline, the estimated total revenue from the paid parking program is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, of that, um, my questions are, is how is this going to be policed? I mean, you're gonna have to pay somebody to watch the marking on the tires or whatever to look at it, or is there gonna be a booth down there that you plan to collect fees from the people?
Uh, yeah, that that's the implementation component that I was talking about. We don't know at this point. Um, of course, a a system with gates would not require any policing. You pay when you leave for the time you were there. Um, I think that's the mayor's desire is to implement gates at our two largest lots, which which cover around, uh, three-quarters of our off-street parking or between the city lot and the city beach lot. So that would reduce enforcement needs to only the the smaller lots that we have elsewhere in the city. We already do parking enforcement in our commercial district. The community resource officers go down daily and chalk tires and and enforce the two, three, and four-hour time limits and write tickets every day. Um, those revenues go to the police fund, of course, because it's the police that are enforcing them. So any enforcement costs that are required of this for for, um, you know, whether it's community resource officers or, um, the technology solution, of course, is gonna be costs associated with any, you know, kiosk system that we employ will be paying for that. Um, they would come out of the 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 parking revenue. So this is revenues. This is not like profits. And another question, um, is that is yet to be determined. This is something for City Council to eventually determine when, if or when this policy gets to them, is, and I would s- suggest to Council that an ordinance be adopted, if a policy is adopted, that articulates how the revenue generated from the off-street parking management plan would be allocated across the city's funds. We have a parking improvement fund at the city. We have a general fund. We have a parks capital improvement fund. How will the, if, let's say we did make three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in, you know, twenty twenty-seven from this plan, um, some, uh, my proposal would probably be that some of that goes into that parking improvement fund so that we have a revenue source to maintain and improve parking lots over time. That, of course, is one of the desired outcomes of a a paid parking policy, is to be able to sustain and support your infrastructure, which, as we know today, is in absolutely terrible shape across all of our off-street parking facilities. And today, that maintenance and and improvement and reinvestment comes out of the 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 city, um, property taxpayers', uh, pockets. So we are doing a resurfacing of the city parking lot at Third and Church Street this year, but we don't have any money in our parking improvement fund to do that. We are using taxpayers' money to do that at a cost of around seventy-five dollars per household in Sandpoint. So we are paying for parking in Sandpoint. Every Sandpoint taxpayer is paying for parking this year as we resurface that city parking lot. But this proposal would say, okay, the future burden of resurfacing those parking lots will be paid by the people who have used them. If at the time of adoption of this, we also adopt an ordinance that allocates, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into the parking improvement fund. But those are those are discussions that we haven't even had yet because we're still just developing a policy.
Okay, uh, just by in future, um, analysis of if it would be possible to show the offsetting, I mean, show the income side of it, but also show the offsetting costs.
Costs of.
Yeah, I mean, so that we can see the reality of it is is, yeah, I mean, wh- what is going where? I mean, uh, earlier, what the, uh, city budget is, and somebody told me it's near forty-three million dollars. And so, you know, when we're talking about even up to a million dollars, you're talking two-point-three percent of the total city budget. So my concern is is if if some of these decisions are totally income-based for the miniscule amount, the two-point-five percent income we're gonna get, are we creating problems for city residents that you can't put a value to? Does this make any sense? I mean, uh, I'd wanna see a city in a grow and, but at the same time, we're not Coeur d'Alene yet, and we're not Sun Valley. So anyway.
And I, we, we, I don't, we at the last meeting, Commissioner Reimer? Okay, yeah, the I think the 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 presentation two weeks ago really focused on the problem we're trying to solve for city residents.
Okay.
Yeah, which is the 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 misallocation of demand for parking right now, where ninety-seven percent of our off-street parking stalls are occupied, where only fifty-one percent of our street stalls are occupied during that peak time. So when when you've got free unlimited off-street parking, you see those parking facilities literally failing our citizens because, uh, they're largely occupied by non-residents who are coming and taking up parking stalls, prohibiting Sandpoint residents from having access to the waterfront. So the idea of free parking, something's not free if it's not available. It's just not available.
Okay.
And, and the real costs of maintaining parking are, are borne by taxpayers right now, and they are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Those costs. Okay, so. Thank you.
And Jason, I had a question about the um, the business spots. Um, have you like looked at how much it costs to rent a parking space in the commercial A zone? Because I, I personally, I pay sixty dollars a month for a parking space, like an off-street space. Some two hundred and fifty dollars a year seems like um, a really good deal, but it, it doesn't seem to be market value or anywhere near market value. And the other question I had about the businesses, would, would that be capped at a certain number?
Um, yeah. Good question. Haven't, haven't thought about that.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I mean, I really, I just haven't like capped, like we only allow a hundred of these passes to be sold or something? I don't know. That's a good, that's a good question to consider.
Business buy number.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But I, I mean, I'm, I'd love to hear more about the, you know, what the market rate for off-street parking spots is downtown. I, we know, we know that for businesses to provide off-street parking spots comes at an incredibly high cost. Right? If you think about if you own a restaurant downtown and you have fifteen employees at your restaurant, can you imagine having to buy land and build fifteen parking spots for your restaurant employees? Like the, the land cost alone would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then you'd have to tear down whatever was there before and, and asphalt it and stripe it and put no parking signs, private parking. And now you've got free off-street parking for your employees, but it's not free. That costs you probably a hundred and fifty, I don't, three hundred thousand dollars, let's say, to provide those, those off-street parking stalls. So you're right, in that regard, this is a screaming deal.
Yeah.
If the city's gonna pave and maintain and put lights and pay the utilities on those lights and plow and crack seal, you know, do all the maintenance in a parking facility that your employees have, have the a- access to for two hundred and fifty dollars. So sixty dollars a month, I did not know that that was the market rate for off-street parking downtown, but.
I mean, I think there's some cheaper. I just, maybe I'm getting gouged. I don't know. Um, I, I did one other question, which was um, um, in reference to um, Ms. Cox's comments, which is, I mean, the, regardless of whether or not the hotel development goes forward, I mean, these problems still need to be solved. Is that right?
Uh, these problems, the, the, the study that informed this proposal was done in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
That was long before any conditional use permit was applied for by the hotel. The comp plan that recommended uh, implementation of a parking management plan was begun in twenty nineteen and adopted in twenty twenty-four. So that, that, this was goal one A of our twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan, which was first drafted in twenty nineteen in the multimodal transportation chapter, was implement a parking management plan to better that provide access to downtown businesses. So th- this is, uh, yeah, the, despite what the, you know, the socials are saying, this is not an outcome of the hotel project. And the hotel is being required to provide the number of parking spots that our code requires of the hotel. And I, I, there are, I will also say that after the two weeks, after two weeks ago in the planning and zoning commission meeting, conversations were had with the hotel uh, suggesting, or in fact, you know, suggesting that there will be community outcry over hotel use of the City Beach parking lot. And a, a commenter two weeks ago had a really good comment that despite, you know, conference season is generally spring and fall, but wedding season is summer. So we reached out to the hotel and we said, look, you need to be aware that if there are special events at your hotel in the summer that are going to draw more people than are typically standing in your hotel, arrangements for off-site parking will be required by the city. The city parking lot will not be available for special event parking at the hotel. And this is not new to Sandpoint. The festival at Sandpoint is a perfect example of this. The, the Memorial Field parking lot does not accommodate, accommodate, or nor does even street parking in South Sandpoint accommodate the, the level of demand for parking that the festival creates, right? You get four thousand people at the festival, many of which are driving from out of state. So what does the festival at Sandpoint do to accommodate parking during the festival they partner with? Spot bus who's here tonight, and they arrange a free shuttle from the high school parking lot, which has ample parking in the summer. So the, the hotel would be required to do the same thing. First, for events that draw large numbers of people during the summer, City Beach parking lot will not be available for those events. And they've, they said, no problem. We are going to have shuttles that are running from the hotel to Spokane Airport and to other places, up to Schweitzer, wherever they need to get people to. We will run shuttles to wherever we need to, to get people to our summer events. So this is a policy thing. These things are solved by policy. If city council decides to put no hotel guest parking signs up in the City Beach parking lot, they have the right to do that, and the city has the right to enforce that. The other thing the hotel has pointed out is that they plan to provide free parking for restaurant guests at the hotel. If City Beach is three dollars an hour and you've got free parking with validation at the hotel, which would you choose? Are you gonna park at City Beach and pay? Or are you gonna go to the hotel and get free parking for your restaurant meal? That's just simple common sense. I'm not gonna go pay to park at City Beach if the hotel's gonna let me park for free if I go eat at the restaurant. So that's another, you know, just common sense solution here. The, the hotel's being required to provide the number of parking spaces required by our code. And accommodations will be made when there is a need for parking beyond what they can provide during weddings, for example, in the summer. And, and of course, during that conference season, the city, we know the City Beach parking lot is pretty much empty anyway. So the city will at least earn some revenue from conference guests paying to park there.
Jason, I got a question for you on the, kind of the annual schedule for this. Seems like it's really focused on a summertime key, that peak summer months and um, wondering if any of that was given to the shoulder seasons and can, you know, really miss out just when it's, like, from my experience, really needed in downtown Sandpoint. The rest of the year, it's quieter, you have more locals parking and working in town at that time. You might have a few weeks in there where it's Christmas season, where it is pretty full. Are those major shoulder seasons what um, was not given to maybe roll, rolling this back or just focusing on the summer once only?
Uh, s- so you're s- suggesting that perhaps the city lot would not be a pay lot for nine months a year, but it would be a pay lot for three months a year?
Right, yeah. What you have proposed here.
Initially, the city lots.
Three months.
Occupant, a- as we, you can go look tomorrow, but the city lot will be ninety-five percent full tomorrow. So peak season at the city lot is all year right now. So the issue is that the use of that lot is creating costs for city taxpayers that aren't being recruit, be recouped or covered by those who are using the lot. So if it's free for nine months out of the year, we still don't have the issue of how do we afford to maintain that lot in the future? How do we replace the asphalt in twenty years when it needs to be replaced again? Who's gonna pay for that? If, if it's free parking for nine months out of the year, we're gonna have a fraction of the money in that parking improvement fund that we would if we're charging for parking in that lot year round.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I hear that. I think there could be like one more layer of like research into that winter, like who's parking there in the wintertime? Is it locals just going to work that day?
Business employees.
Who live in Sandpoint or Warner County, I mean, or is it tourists? I mean, that's kind of a
Yeah.
If it's, if locals are parking there and already paying city taxes, you know, that should probably be included in there, or it's already, they're already paying for this lot. So I think that could be just like looking into in the wintertime, experience wintertime.
So, so it sounds like you'd propose maybe a di- a second downtown business pass. If you're a city resident who works at a downtown business, you could pay one rate for a downtown business pass. If you're a non-resident who works at a downtown business, you pay another rate for a downtown business pass. These are interesting ideas. I'm happy to.
Yeah, think any way to make it, I got Sandpoint local. Not pay twice.
No, I mean, that's a good point, like, yeah. But I'll take note. Thanks.
Cool. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions or comments? So to be clear, when, when we end this period, we're moving on to another topic and another.
Did we cover, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Do we cover um, what the next sort of public review of this would be?
Uh, Wednesday next week at the uh, pedestrian bicycle committee, pedestrian bicycle committee, yes. That um, there, they of course are in the realm of multimodal transportation.
Yeah.
So that's a really relevant one. And then the following day at the Parks and Rec Commission. And we are working on a survey as well. So once we've gone through all the community, or sorry, uh, citizen advisory boards, uh, a survey is, is planning to be sent out. And I've had people request, can you make sure that's, you know, available on paper as well? I want to make sure it's not just via the internet. So we're gonna look at getting a survey out to get as much input as we can on that the challenges we face with our parking downtown.
If, if folks can't make either of those two events, that's.
Emails, emails are great, yep.
I'll say this for, um, appreciate all the folks that showed up tonight. And I'd say the city's done a really good job of creating a new alert system because you referenced the packet, right? Which is everything that is the, the background material for what we go through tonight. And that is publicly available and you can sign up for alerts for it. And um, it's a, i- if you want to know what's going on, it's a, it's a good way to do it, would be my sort of two cents there.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's super easy to find, sandpointadhdot.gov. And there's the meeting, the count, it's literally the first link on our city website. Takes you right here and you can see all upcoming meetings. So for the, anybody watching at home or in the audience tonight, this is the, the easiest way to find what's coming up. So we've got three commission meetings next week. I'll be presenting two of them.
And you can get alerts for when all the materials are provided and you get the materials and it's, it's, it's all of it, so.
That, that agenda has not been posted yet, but the Parks and Rec one, I was posted today, I believe. So if we clicked on that right now, we would see that the um, assuming our clerk posted everything correctly, there you go. So some of the same materials you had tonight will be presented to that Parks and Rec Commission meeting next week. So it's, if it's all public, this is not behind a paywall, this is not password protected. It's the first link on our city website. So I encourage people who are, you know, getting their information on social media, maybe just go confirm that information on our website or send an email to me at Jay Welker at sandpointadhdot.gov or the mayor. Mayor and I reply almost immediately to emails that we get.
But again, thanks for folks showing up tonight because these are typically pretty quiet meetings, these planning and zoning nights, so.
This one's been a.
Appreciate folks doing the research and looking into it.
It's been really cool to see the public engagement at all these meetings.
Yeah, I agree. Um, there's been some uh, misunderstandings from what I've gathered from the community as far as what you, you hit on it, like the, what's the emphasis or where did this come from? And the timing seems, you know, like, uh, you know, it collided at the perfect time. And uh, as much as I would rather that it didn't, that's just how things work. We don't, we don't get to choose what we hear and um, and then some things are just like totally out of our hands too, as, as a commission. And um, and a lot of us here, or I'm, I'm speaking for everybody here, we are city residents who have as much e- empathy and personal uh, feelings about these kind of projects too. So, and that's why we're here, because I was over there at one time worried about what was going on with the city. And I decided, you know, what the heck can I do about it? And uh, this is what you can do about it, is to become a part of it. And um, but I agree, people showing up to, to say what your concerns are, is, is very important because otherwise we wouldn't know. But um, there's also a lot of information out there that I feel like is lost, that doesn't get to everybody, and I would really encourage you to, to spread the word about like, on-street parking will still be free. And, and that's kind of the big benefit of this is on-street parking could be charged. I mean, the city would be justified in doing that because so many other cities charge or, or I mean, you can't park anywhere in Spokane for free, right? An off-street parking is impossible to park at without getting a ticket, in my opinion. And I, I, I have plenty of those to prove it. So so also the, the opportunity from last meeting that some of the things were amended or edited based on the, the testimony of the comments from people outside of the city and inside the city. So I feel like the city's going pretty far with this as far as to tailor it to what works for everybody. Although there's still gonna be people who are, are opposed to it, I feel like it's gonna be about as good as we can get. Besides just keeping it as it is, is for the people who are against it, I don't think that um, I don't think there's a solution because we do have to start paying for this stuff. And so I'm optimistic that the money that is generated from this goes to, to build a very nice facility at City Beach and the pub, uh, and the, and the city lot as far as something that's more appealing looking, maybe more spaces, um, more accessible to more local people. Because I'm definitely one of the people who drives around the, you know, all these lots looking for a place to park and, and ends up leaving because there's no place to park. And then I'll, I'll walk down or, you know, ride a bike or something like that, or catch a ride with somebody. But that's, that's the reality of how great this place is, is that you know, there's competition for, for this space and it's um, I guess that's a good thing, but um, yeah. That'd be great to, to hear what you guys come up with at these next meetings and I hope that they're well attended as well. So we can, we can move on now? All right. Okay, new business. Um, for our first item of new business, city legal council will provide some training and tran- and refresher topics relevant to the commission. I will now yield the floor to city attorney Fonda Jovik. Welcome.
Thank you. And congratulations on your new position.
I, you cleared the room.
I did.
All they heard was.
They're like, we do not want to listen to an attorney.
I don't know, we have a distinction between may and shall.
I know, we could maybe have a little tutorial on that.
Did we clear out Zoom also?
I'm totally fine right here. It's okay. Thank you. I can make better eye contact from here. So welcome our new commissioners. I have not had the opportunity to meet either of you yet. You will uh, get a chance to interact with me at some point guaranteed. I always hope that it's positive. I think the rest of the commissioners will tell you that most of the time it is. I am the appointed city attorney. My name's Fonda Jovik. I am a resource for you. My job is to make sure that in these meetings that we follow the law that, and follow process, that we protect people's due process rights. We protect applicants, we protect private property rights while at the same time balancing that with the needs of your citizenry. So we will try um, not to spend an enormous amount of time on this. I think Mo's has now seen this presentation. This will be the fourth time. Last time I said he could teach it, I, I meant it. But it's always a good refresher and I hope that you get something out of it, even if you've heard it before. So first and foremost, and when I flip here, that's just your spine. How's that? So uh, your staff, when we talk about staff and you're looking at us and saying, is the city ready? That often makes the hair stand up on the back of my neck because we are all the city. So you are the city, I am the city, they are the city, but we to you are your staff. So I, I am your city attorney. I can handle all the legal questions. You have your city planner, Bill Dean, your community development director, Jason Welker, who you know. We also work closely as a team with Pete Scone, the building official, and Brandon Stagland, your city engineer. So we as a team meet every week. We are constantly processing through applications, uh, matters that are gonna come before you, making sure the public's being served, making sure we're staying, keeping everybody on the rails with regards to following code. That seems to be our number one challenge these days is just educating, educating, educating the public and applicants on your city code and what it allows and what it doesn't. I always say, we have to make sure that people follow the rules. If you don't follow the rules, change the rules. But we don't have the ability to make the rules change and bend and, and be gray. And even, I know as lawyers, we always say it depends and things are gray and Bill hates it when I say it depends, but the reality is that most of the time in your city code, it's pretty clear, we can give clear direction and our job as a team is to make sure that's happening, to do all the things that I talked about before, which is to make sure we bring you nice, clean presentations and decision points for applicants as well as legislative matters. So what is your job? So you're going to conduct legislative hearings? You're starting to get some experience with legislative decision-making just in this parking management plan that's been brought before you. You've had the opportunity to see what currently exists, nothing. You've been presented with the problem that is viewed, you, you've heard public input. That's a legislative process. It's not, you haven't had a formal public hearing and you won't on this because it's not gonna be code. But, and it's not gonna be in the zoning code, which is where your decision-making comes from, but you're seeing the legislative process at its finest. But it's not gonna be in the zoning code, which is where your decision-making comes from, but you're seeing the legislative process at its finest. You're going to conduct quasi judicial hearings. You literally sit as the judge. That's when applicants, landowners come before you with specific applications. They want to do something with their land. And they need to run that through you because your city code says that you, either you are a decision point for them or you're a recommending body up to council for a decision. So your job is to make sure that the hearing procedures and deliberations are consistent with the law, and we're gonna go through what that those procedures are and what appropriate deliberations look like. Your job is to make sure that you have really clear outcomes, that you've given a very clear decision, and that you make motions that have all the appropriate elements in them. That's where we come in. We will help you with that, but that's your responsibility. And then I put a little list at the end about land use items that we encounter, but you're gonna see conditional use permits, variances, subdivision applications, um, help me with my list, what am I missing? PUDs, oh yeah, we're gonna talk about that next. Anything land use related that is more than a short plot. Most of you have heard the term short plot is going to come before you. I put a little saying at the bottom for you to think about. Zoning and planning law lies at the intersection of major legitimate governmental powers and significant individual rights. So you can just kind of ponder that for a minute. So your legislative public hearings are matters of general concern. We've talked about that a little bit, code amendments. They have open-ended comments. People aren't really coming in to say, I don't like this because it affects me. They will say it affects me, but you're talking about the general well-being of your city. Um, the subject of the hearing must be roughly prepared at the time of notice, so it has different notice requirements. The the noticing gives the public a really good indication of what you're going to be talking about and has a lot more detail. It's an open format for a hearing, and when we close the hearing, it doesn't affect individual rights. The open format means that we, you're gonna gather information from a lot of different places, not just in the hearing itself when people come and make public comment. You're gonna hear things in the community, you're gonna get emails from people, you're gonna talk to staff. You're gonna talk with the mayor. You're you're just gonna gather information from a variety of different places, hopefully not too much from social media, as you've learned, that can be dangerous. Unlike a quasi judicial hearing, where when you close that hearing, somebody's individual rights are affected. Somebody has been given the answer of yes or no in relationship to their own individual piece of land. And so in a legislative hearing, that open format and that ability to gather information from a variety of different places doesn't mean that when the hearings close, somebody's individual rights are affected. And you guys can ask me questions at any point too, so just like lean forward, raise your hand, whatever you wish. So quasi judicial hearings, I will get a lot more particular and cranky if we don't follow processes with quasi judicial hearings. Why is that? Because if we screw those up, we, meaning I, end up in court defending you. And we don't like to be there. We like your decision-making process to be clean. So quasi judicial hearings deal, as I've said before, and I'll say it again, specific individual rights. An applicant is coming before you and asking to do something with their property. Idaho Code requires that they be given due process and that affected parties be given due process. So that means that they have the the affected party, so within three hundred feet of the the parcel that the applicant owns that's coming before you, they all are entitled to be noticed. They have, there's notice requirements of the hearings, and they have an opportunity to be heard. We have to create by Idaho Code out of that hearing, a transcribable verbatim record. So that's, that's because if after you make a decision, one side or the other doesn't like it, and they file a petition for judicial review to have a judge decide whether or not you made the right decision, that entire record is transcribed into written format and submitted to the court. So in those quasi judicial hearings, it's really important, and your your chairman has been doing this long enough. He he knows what this sort of rhythm is going to look like, but it's important that you only speak one at a time, that you not speak over top of each other, that you ask your chairman to be recognized so that he can recognize you by name. Imagine if you all individually just start speaking, and you have a court reporter listening to this, and she has no idea who any of you are. So if the chairman's not recognizing you, she has no, and I say she because most of our court reporters are, that was very gender biased, wasn't it? She has no idea who's speaking unless your chairman says, Mr. Weber, yes, you may speak. Commissioner Weber, you have the floor. Commissioner Benner, you have the floor. So in those quasi judicial hearings, more so than other times, it is really important that we follow protocol in case we have to create a record. And we have had enormous records come out of here, you know, thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred pages that we've had to submit to the court, and it's just, it's really difficult, so it's important. Um, primary topics for all of your quasi judicial hearings are land use related. And all of the comments that you consider in your decision-making must come in during the hearing. I'm gonna say that again. You cannot rely on any information that you do not receive in the hearing. So if as you're preparing for the hearing, you get all your materials, you're reviewing, and you don't see information in a staff report that you think is important for your decision-making, you're gonna contact Bill, and you're going to ask him your question, and you're going to let him answer, or he'll tell you, I will have that answer for you at the hearing. But you're going to make sure, because you can speak with him ahead of time, but you're going to make sure that if that information doesn't come out in the middle of the hearing, that you ask the question to get it into the record. That's the whole point. So if it's not in the staff report, and you know it's information that you think you're going to need in order to make a decision, you need to be prepared with your questions at the time of the hearing, so we can get that, you can get that information into the record to help you make a decision. So again, all, you can only rely on what you hear during the hearing. Don't go driving past the property in question. Don't make comments about how you drive that road all the time, and you know what traffic is like, like. You will have a traffic study to rely on. There are lots of things that commissioners in good faith want to use in deliberations as decision points that you didn't hear during the public hearing. Practice.
Um, so let me get this straight. So if in some of these quasi judicial hearings, you'll know the address, you'll get the packet.
Do not go to the property.
Do not go to the property. That's interesting.
If you happen to drive by it on a routine course that you take, and we're not a big city, right? If you happen to drive by it on a routine course that you take on a normal basis, and you are generally aware of the location of the property.
Point is, don't bias this yourself.
That's right. That's right. Well, and I've had, I've had council members who decided to go to a subdivision location, get out of their car to walk around because they wanted to look at conditions on the ground and run into the property owner. Now guess what? They're conflicted out of actually sitting for deliberations and making a decision. And you literally were appointed to vote. So as I always tell my electeds and appointeds, because I represent a number of cities, don't put yourself in a position where you can't vote. That is literally your job.
Gotcha.
Which city is the first?
I cannot answer that here. I'll have to answer it.
Cannot tell a lie.
I cannot tell a lie.
Question for you. The actual timing on when a project becomes like a private property matter for an owner.
Yep.
Like when does that actually kick in? No, just hypotheticals, people in the community talking, like when does it actually become a?
That is a beautiful question. So these guys will have a pre-application meeting with an applicant before they actually file an application. If there is a person in town who believes they want to do something with their property, and they start to talk to you about it, y- you really shouldn't talk to them about it. Whether they have, I mean, I would say at the pre-app point, that is legitimately when it's now in front of the city, if you will. But you're not gonna know that. You're not gonna know it till it hits your packet, and that could be a year. That could be six months later. So it's best just not to have a conversation with anyone who thinks they want to do something with their property. That was one of those, it depends answers, wasn't it? And it's hard. It's gonna be really hard. Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I'm a realtor.
Oh.
Visiting properties all the time. And you know, for instance, and I'm also, I also do the compliance for my office. I have to look at every transaction that everybody does. And so I'll just give you an example, a hypothetical. Somebody just purchases a hundred and twenty acres, they want to subdivide it into tens. And I know that this is gonna happen, and it's probably gonna be, have to come through this committee. Um, do I get to vote on those things, or do you have to like recuse yourself like a ju- well, like the?
So we're gonna have two layers of analysis on that. One, how much do you know about the proposed subdivision, but more important than that, did you receive a financial benefit from the transaction? Cause the answers.
Financial benefit from every transaction in our office.
So we'll have to look at these very carefully, every application that comes in that you may or may not be connected to. Because what we can do is, there is opportunity to just clear it on the record to say, if you receive a financial benefit, and you'll see when we get further down the slides, we're we're gonna have a hard time letting you sit for any of those decisions. Um, knowledge is a different thing. You can say, I I knew just basic information. We just disclose it on the record. We make sure that you make an affirmative statement in the hearing that you are not biased, that you can make, you know, an unbiased, fair decision, and then we let you proceed. But we'll, we'll have to analyze these carefully as they come in. Great question. And now you're thinking, why did I take this shot? Teasing you.
Well, Commissioner Williams, we, in the past, we had a a real estate agent who did recuse himself quite often. And and I think a few times that I knew of, he maybe did that just to be over cautious.
Yep.
And it was just because he was friends with somebody. It wasn't like he had any dealings with them, or there was no financial gain, but but I I felt like it put him in a strange position where, yeah, a lot of the stuff we heard may, like, it may, may not be your, you know, your time to hear it.
Right. So as long as, when you well, you go, it's a small community. You're gonna know when something's already made it to the city, and then give Bill a call first, and we'll talk through whether or not you need to recuse yourself. Um, order of your public hearing is always explanation of the hearing procedures by your chairman or your vice chair. Then there'll be a staff presentation, an applicant presentation. There, during the applicant's presentation is when you want to ask the applicant all of your questions. So when you have read your materials ahead of time and you're prepared for questions, that is when you will ask the bulk of the questions. There will be some that should be directed to staff, but we've kind of had to retrain these commissions that this is not, your staff doesn't know all of the ins and outs of why an applicant is asking to do what they're asking to do. Your staff's job is to say, is this application consistent with code such that I can take it in front of the commission or the council? That's it. That's not their job to get into the brain of the applicant and figure out what all their motives are. So you want to ask all of those questions of your applicant. Then you'll have testimony for those who are in favor of the application, testimony from those who are neutral, testimony from those who are opposed. They get their three minutes, they make their comment. We do not debate with them, we do not engage with them, they do not ask you questions, or they might, and you'll sit there and stare at them awkwardly, but it happens. Um, and that is just, then we finish up the testimony, and the applicant can rebut anything that they heard in testimony. And then we close the hearing. You do have the ability to ask staff questions still during your deliberations, but only staff. Oftentimes, it'll be a legal question or a clarifying question. And then you deliberate. We're gonna talk in a minute about ex parte communication and deliberations. But you also, I know you've heard this lecture before, maybe, you can't communicate with each other about this outside of this room. All of these discussions and deliberations have to occur here. And I have had commissioners say to me before, but if we don't have a quorum, we can talk about it. No, you cannot. Because the legal definition of deliberation is any conversation that you have with anyone that helps you make a decision. So it doesn't matter who it, who that person is outside of the hearing process. It can't be each other, it can't be anyone else other than staff. You can't have conversations with each other that ultimately end up helping you make a decision because that's the definition of a deliberation. There's a misconception that deliberation is just what you do after the application's presented to you when you talk about it amongst yourselves. That's not actually the law. And then after you deliberate, which every one of you should have an opportunity to speak and express your concerns, or talk about how the application meets the standards of approval or does not, you'll make a reasoned decision. Now, your staff does a really good job of uh, listening to your deliberations and sort of pulling your findings out of that. And you want to make sure that as you have the standards of approval, every application has a different set of standards of approval in front of you, those come out of your code, that you talk about each one of those standards of approval, and what facts support whether or not this application meets those standards or not. So in your deliberations, it's great to say, we like the project, and it meets the feel of the community, and it's great for standpoint. Okay, well, but can it be served by water? Can it be served by sewer? What are we doing with the streets? Have police commented? Can we get there with a fire truck? I mean, there are a lot of things in your standards of approval that are very specific that you need to comment on during your deliberation. You don't have to have them all written out. It doesn't have to be a, you know, really fancy narrative, and they don't all have to be in your motions, but you need to talk about them. You'll get a lot of practice though. Um, so your public hearing deliberation best practices, you'll be called on by the commissioner one at a time. Everybody's given an opportunity to speak. Uh, everybody addresses the commission, not each other. And then, as I just indicated, you go through the decision points and reach a consensus on whether or not each point is met. Any questions on that? We talk faster. So what is your role during the public hearing? You need to be prepared uh, having read your staff report, figuring out what questions you still need answered, listen to the testimony, ask your questions, make your motions, debate, deliberate, make a decision. And then the written decision will come back to you. You've not seen this robustly in standpoint, but we're gonna change that practice. That written decision is coming back to you later for approval. So that you will read it, and you will know exactly what is sent to the applicant.
Are those decision, written decisions made public?
Uh, written decisions are made public, yes. As soon as they come back to you, they're part of that next meeting's packet. Yes. The applicant's job during a public hearing is to present the summary of their application and the support for their request, answer any questions that you have, and rebut testimony from the opponents. If you have an applicant in front of you that is not talking about the standards of approval and how their application meets those standards, feel free to ask them questions. A lot of them will come up here and they'll say, I'm a longtime standpoint resident, I've been here forever. My property is here, and I, you know, I love the surrounding area, and the lakes are great, and I love to go skiing, and you'll hear all about their life and them, and you'll hear absolutely nothing about their application. And so, and I, we don't blame them for that, we don't shame them for that, we just ask them questions to help them get into the record, and that's your job, information about their project. Um, sometimes you'll go down a line of questioning that is probably not appropriate. It's just human nature. If I lean forward and grab my microphone, that's usually a sign that I have something to say. And usually it'll be, you should probably pause for a minute and go down a different line of questioning. And I'll give you some indication as to what's happened and redirect you. Uh, role of the citizen during your hearing is to testify on the positive or negative impacts of the proposal, informing you about the characteristics of the site and suggesting acceptable alternatives or ways to mitigate the negative impacts of the proposal. If only our commenters were that concise when they came here. They're not always, but that's okay. Some people, you know, most people have something useful to say. And I would also encourage you, if you hear in public comments some genuine concerns that you think need addressed, your applicants getting back up here in rebuttal, ask some questions about what you heard during that comment period. That's perfectly appropriate. Yes.
At that stage, can we ask the public person up there for clarification of what they're saying? Get into a debate or anything like that, but.
I encourage you not to, unless they're just spitting out word salad that makes absolutely no sense, and you think there might be a nugget in there. But just let them say what they have to say. If I would never say, no, absolutely not, if you think it's important or you wanna reframe it and say, if I understood you correctly, is this what you're saying? That's fine, but be careful. Once you engage, sometimes it goes down a downhill fast. How to reach a decision? So we've talked about this a little bit already. I apologize for the sort of repetitiveness of this. I'm trying to hammer it home. Discuss it first, don't rush to judgment. Don't come here with a prepared um, statement for a quasi judicial hearing. I have had many commissioners and council members that you wanna, if you want to give a giant red flag of bias, come here with your decision already made or look like you are, because that is a giant red flag. Uh, everybody needs to participate, even you don't have to repeat what everybody else has said. Sometimes the first person to speak will hit all the high points and all the elements. They'll talk about the standards of approval. They'll go through the list quite concisely and you absolutely can say, I don't have anything to add. That's okay. But you at least need to say that. And then the justification for your decision and really making sure that the standards of approval have been met. And and I keep hammering on these standards of approval and whether or not they've been met because of Idaho Code sixty seven dash sixty five nineteen. What most commissioners and council members don't realize is if you want to deny an application, you have to tell the applicant what they can do to obtain approval. And that kinda sets wrong with a lot of people, but it's required in code. So I, that's why it's so important that you are clear when you identify the facts that support those standards of approval or where there's gaps, because you have to tell them how they can be successful. Questions on that?
Was it denial for like a CUP? Is that considered a taking?
Um, no, a denial for a conditional use permit is not guaranteed to be a taking, but it could be. And the CUP, if you've looked at all the standards of approval for a CUP, has a lot of evaluation points. I think nine different standards on a CUP to evaluate. So, yes.
Findings of fact, is this where findings of fact comes in?
Yeah, so I've been talking about the facts that support your approval uh, based on the standards. Those are your findings of fact. Your findings of fact are exactly what you've heard in the public hearing that help you decide whether or not, whether they do or do not meet the standards of approval put in front of you. Those are your findings of fact. And what I said earlier is we will pick those out of your deliberations. If you say it in deliberations, we'll, staff will pluck those out. You don't have to put them all in your motion. And then you'll, they're gonna come back to you and you're gonna see those findings of fact in that written decision that you'll approve at the next meeting. Any more questions on that? We can skip the written decision. We've talked about that enough. Uh, reconsideration of a final decision, so you don't have all of the final. You are the final decision maker on a CUP. And then there is a reconsideration period for an applicant or an affected party has to be filed within fourteen days after the written decision is approved. So just know that that piece is out there. And then it could come back to you. So if they file a request for reconsideration, it comes back to you to hear the whole thing again. And then you make your decision again. And then after they've met that requirement of Idaho Code, they're free to go up to district court on a petition for judicial review. Make sense? Due process considerations, so quasi judicial hearings are grounded in considerations of due process and the applicant's right to a fair and impartial hearing. So what we're gonna talk about next is those hearings that we sort of touched on a little bit already, must be free from conflicts of interest, bias and ex parte communication. So conflicts of interest are prohibited. So it's when the board member or employee or his employer, business partner, business associate, or any person related to him by affinity or consanguinity, which is your cousin, with the second degree has an economic interest in the procedure or action. So that's where those real estate transactions, we just really have to take a hard look at that on each one. And then no member of a governing board or planning and zoning commission with a conflict of interest shall, not may, shall participate in any aspect of the decision making process. So we actually have you get up from the dais, go to the back of the room. Uh, while the application is brought forward, the hearings conducted, the deliberations are made. I will tell you, don't sit in the back of the room and snort, snot, groan, moan, smile, clap. You ought to be stone faced because anything you do can influence the other decision makers that are up here. And we're trying to protect the process and make sure that they're free to make a decision without any input from you because you have a conflict. Questions? Bias. So this is a great one. And this is where social media drives me absolutely insane. So parties, all the parties in a quasi judicial matter are entitled to an unbiased decision makers. And our county, Bonner County, gave us the poster case on this. So pre-hearing statements by decision maker are fatal to the validity of zoning determinations if the statements show that the decision maker has made up or his mind regarding the facts and will not listen to the evidence with an open mind. So you come in here with an opinion at the beginning of a quasi judicial hearing, you start spouting your opinion and you don't listen to what anybody else has to say. Or that you can't or won't apply the existing law. So you just know what the law is, it's been given to you by staff and you're just refusing to apply the law as it exists. Or you've already made up your mind regarding the outcome of the hearing before you ever get here. So biased decision makers should be barred from participating in land use applications to protect the process. The reason social media drives me crazy in relationship to bias, and this is what happens. If you are outside of this room and you are using a platform of any kind to express your general concern, that is, I'll just use this as an example, an anti-growth sentiment. Developers or applicants can grab everything you've said on social media that has nothing to do with how you behaved in here, whether it's in your individual capacity or not, and they can come in here and they can say, I don't want Commissioner Benner to sit for my hearing. He's proven to be biased and let me show you the laundry list of things that he said in the newspaper, on the radio or on social media that gives me that opinion. And we have no choice but to say, Mr. Benner, thank you for the, your service. We need you to sit in the back of the room for this one. If collectively, or one, two, three, four, or more of you start doing that, luckily we have a big enough commission, this wouldn't be a problem, hopefully. And you all are asked to not make a decision because you're expressing this sentiment in the public. Now guess what? You literally have lost your job as a decision maker and we, the the applicant by code is entitled to a hearing examiner. That will not be you. So there are just real significant implications that affect your ability to be an unbiased decision maker. And it doesn't generally happen in this room. It happens in everything else you do in your personal life. So that's my, my strong lecture on be very careful on what you're saying in the public, on social media, in the newspaper, on the news, wherever you may be, that would prevent you from then coming in here and doing the job that you need to do. I tell all of my electeds and my commissioners, I don't care what your decision on any application is at the end of the day. I just care that you came to it appropriately. And that the process was followed and that the procedures were met and that we've given, we have provided everybody who's entitled with due process rights that they're entitled to and a fair and impartial hearing. So this is just my only opportunity generally to hit you all at once with be very, very careful with your uh, opinions that are posted to the general public. You're entitled to have them. You just don't always get to share them now. Uh, next is ex parte communication. We touched on this earlier. Uh, it can prevent your continued participation in a hearing. It uh, has to be disclosed. If you've had any ex parte, any ex parte communication, for instance, landowner comes in here with an application for a subdivision, you've had contact with that person, you've just know some general information. Alls we're gonna do is have you disclose that at the beginning of the hearing and then make an affirmative statement that you can be fair, impartial and unbiased. If it's too significant or you've had too much communication or like my council member that went to the property, ended up having a lengthy conversation with the landowner, that'll earn you an invitation to the back of the room for that particular hearing. It's not a bad thing. It just, it's just the process and what we do. It's just the law. Guess if we don't like the law, we change the law. And that is it. Any further, any additional questions? Yes.
Um, yeah, I'm a bit confused. It had nothing you spoke about specifically today. But um, in a quasi judicial decision, can a commissioner abstain?
No, you're either in or you're out.
Either in or you're out.
It's kinda like you're either pregnant or you're not.
No, in a, in a, in a non quasi judicial?
You could abstain in that. I I don't know why you would, but you could.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all. Thanks. Sorry.
My question has to do with um, conflicts of interest and whether or not property ownership proximate to where the application is constitutes a conflict. If there's a rule of three hundred feet or five hundred feet like uh, other states have, I'm curious.
So we do not have a hard rule on that. If the commissioner is next door to the applicant or three parcels owner, three parcels over and is affected by this application in the, in any way and has a strong feeling, we would ask them to recuse themselves.
It's a case by case.
But it's a case by case analysis. We, we had one not long ago where one of our council members had a property near our application and it was a full disclosure at the beginning of the meeting and, and she proceeded with the hearing and.
Just a cautionary note for commissioners, if you have a property that's um next door to an application, just um, you might wanna let us know so we can contact our legal counsel and go through that analysis. I've, I've in the past produced conflict maps. Um, you know, just basically if anything's within the little bubble near your house, make sure you contact us so we can double check with Fonda and her team.
Absolutely. And you will never, there will never be any consequences for disclosing and remaining. There will always be consequences for failing to disclose. So over disclose or or check with us and be overly cautious rather than just keeping it to yourself and then somebody in the public who wants to make a big deal out of it brings it up later. It looks worse. Uh, for you new commissioners, um, I don't believe staff has sent these to you yet. I think Melissa has them in electronic format. So there's a planning and zoning and annexation um, bible that I call. The transparent and ethical government bible is most mostly for council members, but there's a lot of good stuff in here for commissioners as well. These are put out by the Association of Idaho Cities. They do a really good job of of giving us materials that we can use for you so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel or produce this ourselves. And so we'll make sure that the clerks get these over to you. You don't have to read them word for word. You, a lot of what you heard tonight um, comes out of these manuals, but there's some good stuff in there and there's a lot more detail than I was able to give you tonight.
Got a question?
Yes.
Not specific to actually this presentation, but can you talk through the process for this uh, commission actually create agenda items? If, is that in a process that?
Maybe that Bill could speak to that, how the commission, how the agenda is created.
Sure.
So it's, it's, I can start. It's application driven first. So your first and foremost responsibility is to make sure we're processing the applications that come through that need to be in front of you. Um, what always comes behind those applications will be all of the code amendments that have to come to you. So zone, the Local Land Use Planning Act, Idaho Code Title sixty seven dash sixty five edsec requires that all zoning code for the cities be vetted through your planning and zoning commission first. And you have titles nine, ten, eleven and twelve? Yeah, that all fall within your zoning codes. You'll have code amendments that'll, that'll come before you and those will be on your agenda. Are you looking for like, if there's citizen topics that are important, how would we get those on an agenda for for information only? You'd work with these two gentlemen over here.
In what capacity can you talk through?
Yeah, you'd need to let them know what issue you think needs to be talked about. You guys can work through sort of what you're looking for in relationship to information from them for the public. Um, whether or not it's driving a code change, whether or not it's a comprehensive plan question. I mean, it's hard without knowing kind of what you're thinking, but, but if you have citizen concerns coming to you, they may know whether or not it actually comes to you guys or needs to go straight to council. Also, but, but.
I'll add a little bit, Fonda. I mean, thank you, Commissioner, for the, for the, for the question. It's, it's a bit of a balancing act. I'll be honest with you, um, as a practical matter. Um, it's a busy office, a lot going on, a lot of pro, you know, a lot of applications we have to process. Um, and typically our workload is is driven like Fonda said, you know, from the applications that are filed, but also from the priorities that, you know, our director working with uh, the mayor has established for our department as well as what city council's priorities are. Um, I've, it's, I've been told ten times now what the priorities are for working on the zoning ordinance. I know some things I'd like to get done, but I've been told that the priorities are, are, are certain things. So when can we squeeze it in? If there's something that, that the commission is really adamant about wanting to see changed in the code or looked at, um, we can begin a dialogue about how that might unfold. It's um, probably not gonna come to pass where at one meeting you say, hey, next meeting, I'd like to see a revision to this ordinance. That's typically not how we are sized and, and operate. We said, you've got Katie Keeney and myself as the professional planners working with uh, Jason and the mayor to establish our, our work program. So we'll, we'll get to things. It just might not be, um, I think we have to develop an understanding of how that, of how that works.
Another part of that process too is you'll see at the end of tonight's meeting, there's a commissioner roundtable where commissioners can talk a little bit about things, concerns that they have or things that have come up. So no single commissioner can drive an agenda item, but collectively is a better way to do it. So that roundtable is a good time to bring it up and get some consensus from the rest of your commissioners as to whether or not it's a priority for them. So just another part, another opportunity in the process for agenda items. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fonda. Um, Bill mentioned our team over here and I, before we move on to the final agenda item, I, I just wanted to introduce our team uh, to the planning zoning commission. This is actually our, our whole planning team here. We're a small team at the city. Um, Haley on the left is our uh, deputy clerk at the city. She's not part of the planning team, but she's for now gonna be assist, leading the clerking of these meetings, maybe eventually handing it off to, to Krista. Uh, Krista in the middle is our planning tech slash admin assistant. Uh, Krista joined us about four months ago now, probably. Four months ago. Krista worked as a planning tech in uh, Nevada before she relocated up here. So she had some experience in a, in a municipal planning department before joining us. And then Katie Keeney is our assistant planner, uh, who worked at the city before she assumed the role of assistant planner. She was our engineering tech before she moved over to the planning department. So we have a, a small but mighty team. The whole development team which works together regularly, weekly, behind the scenes includes our city engineer, who's not in the planning department. He's in the public works department. And our building team, which is our building official and our building permit tech, um, who we just found out is gonna be relocated to Michigan, be closer to family. So we're gonna be uh, hiring a new building permit tech in the next couple of weeks to, to, to get that team back up to its full size. But our whole development team is about, what is that, about seven, seven of us, I believe. Uh, we, we meet weekly to go over current planning efforts. We've got at any given time, probably fifteen to twenty five or more. You know, everything from a small building permit application to a, to a whole PUD application or subdivision application that we're, we're working through weekly. Um, that, as Bill said, is our, that's what we call our current planning. Current planning is right now all consuming at the city. It's just uh, applications are coming all the time. We, we probably have three, three pre-app meetings a week. That's where I meet with a prospective developer. When I say developer, I mean anybody looking to do an addition on their home to somebody who wants to subdivide a hundred and ten acres into ten acre parcels. Not many of those in standpoint. But we, we are doing pre-app meetings weekly, um, several of them a week with, you know, people who are the very early stages. And some of those will eventually bring, uh, be brought to the commission. Most of them won't. Most of what we do is administratively approved. The short plots, those are subdivisions of four lots or less. A, a lot of what we, the site plan reviews, which are just, you know, new industrial or commercial developments. Most of that is just happening behind the scenes. Some of it requires a signature from the mayor before it's, it's finally approved. But you guys will see all of the, the larger, um, you know, planning and zoning issues that we process at the city. So I just wanted to introduce that team before we started on our final agenda item. This is gonna be, I started off with the parking agenda item. Bill's gonna wrap it up with the recap of planned unit developments. We did a little intro to planned unit developments a few months ago with the previous commission. We have two new commission. We have two new commissioners, so we thought it'd be appropriate to give you some additional reading materials for tonight. Hopefully did your homework. And then Bill's gonna do a kind of a deep dive into our ordinances around planning developments, which we did not look at in the first go around.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it from the microphone. I'm gonna take Fonda's, uh, lead here and come up here. It's gonna be easier just to look at you and, and Jason, thanks for, um, pulling up some notes I have on the screen. So, uh, chair commissioners, good evening again. Congratulations on chairmanship and vice chairmanship. I'm very much looking forward to, um, working with you on, on all these applications that come forward. And we're gonna have an application come forward, a PUD in March. Um, so it's altogether appropriate that we should take a look and, um, just read through the ordinance together. So what I've done is I've, I've just dumped the, uh, the ordinance itself, uh, into Word document. And I started, um, just reading through it and saying, look, what, what are, what are some of the things that, that jump out at me when I, when I read this ordinance? Because it's, if you're gonna look at the PD application, you're gonna want to look at the code and see what the ordinance says about how we process these, what they're all about. And I've kind of broken it down a little bit. I just want to point out a couple of things that jump out at me. So we don't have to read every, every, uh, line and verse here, but what I want to do this evening is just walk you through some thoughts about, um, you know, what, what this ordinance is, is trying to do. And like Jason mentioned, there's some information in your packet. We did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago regarding PUDs, some history. For the two new commissioners, there's some additional reading material for you. In a nutshell, um, PUDs were invented back in the sixties, kind of popularized in the eighties as, as a means to achieve some creativity in the development, um, trying to solve a problem where, where, that, that we saw as a country um, when just zoning districts were implemented, um, with subdivisions, this very uniform, generic approach. If you have a, a zoning district that has a certain lot size, you're gonna see a cookie cutter approach to, um, how that land is divided. And, um, born of that frustration is the idea that you, we can be creative and have, uh, a, a planned unit development, um, be approved by jurisdiction that enables some flexibility to be brought to bear on how that land is going to be developed. Most zoning codes have some sort of a planned due development. Yours is no exception and we'll get into some of the details as, as we read through this, this ordinance together. But basically there, it's, it's a tool to provide some flexibility for both the applicant and jurisdiction to see better outcomes in conformance with what your comp plan is telling you that you like to see on the ground. So what's interesting here is that this is a permit. It's a quasi judicial action that's going to be taken, uh, ultimately by the city council. And so findings have to be made in order to approve this. Um, and we're gonna see that a little bit later in the ordinance where they actually are. Um, one thing that's interesting, interesting to me is, is it gets at this idea that this is a discretionary action. This, this ordinance talks about things, the development proposal being harmonious with its, with its environment. You, you can't arrive at that conclusion unless there is some deliberation and dis, in, in discretion in, in your action. Thus the findings, thus the deliberation, just the, thus the evaluation. We're trying to get development that benefits its surroundings, benefits into its context. There has to be discretion when you're, when you're exercising those muscles and using, um, these permits. It's important, I think, to note that this, the, the PD sets out what the, what the purpose is. What, why do we have this? Why does Sandpoint allow a PUD to be used at all? Well, Jason, you can scroll up a little bit here, but A, B, C, D, E all talk about desired development patterns. In other words, residential, you know, RS zone, residential multifamily, residential families not getting us there. We want to have another tool in the toolkit that can help us achieve our goals. PUD is basically, um, we're putting a line around a property and say, okay, how can we design this better? And why do we have this ordinance in place is because we have A through E there saying, this is the desired outcome we're looking for as a city. So notice to applicants, notice to property owners, this is what we're looking for. So when you read over this ordinance, we can send you these notes. I think, um, I just created this this afternoon, but we can certainly email that to you if you, if you want to have this as a little bit of a, um, you know, Bill's notes on the, on the, in the margins of the ordinance to help you look at things. Um, that's what, that's what it's intended to do is just take, take sort of the planteries out of this and just put some common sense language to what this audit says. Cause after all, it's ten pages long. So that's the purpose of it. You know, we, we, we're trying to create a better environment and we can't always get there with standard office shelf zoning districts. We have to have some other tools in the toolkit, but you don't have to approve them. You have to make findings, make sure they can be better further in our comp plan. So let's go on and look at the application. So a big part of this ordinance talks about what has to be filed. And what gets really confusing really quickly with, um, PUDs is the, 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 the nature of the approval process with everything that's before you. There's a lot of information that's laid out in this code in terms of what, um, what's expected to be submitted. This ordinance establishes a two-step process for PUDs. There's this thing called the preliminary plan and then there's a final development. And it's really going to be important for you when you evaluate a, a PUD is to recognize what state and stage you're in. Most of the time it are going to be split up between looking at the preliminary plan and then later the final development plan. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. Yes, they can be combined, but for the purpose of understanding this ordinance, this visualizes as two distinct steps. Okay. And you have a really important role as a commission. A lot of authorities is vested in you as a commission to give the green light on whether or not the preliminary plan is, is, um, gonna be acceptable to the community or not. Cause that is a real strong signal. You're telling the property or the applicant that, yeah, you're on the right track and, and you proceed to, to final. So the application, um, has to contain this preliminary plan and it's gotta be done by a property owner. At this stage, it's can be done by a property owner or somebody having an equitable interest. That this, this code distinguishes between, um, having somebody with an equitable interest in the property, being able to submit a preliminary plan. When it comes to the final development plan, you actually have to own the property. It's very interesting the way that the, the audit is organized that way. And as we're looking at a PD together, we'll be walking you through, um, whether or not the application was filed appropriately and highlighting things for you that, um, that jump out to us as staff. Looking at the application, it says here, you gotta list the zoning districts that are the subject of the PUD. You're on a piece of property in Sandpoint. What's a zoning district? The reason why I highlighted this is because some cities, um, zoning is actually a legislative act. It's like in a mini zone district, you plop down on the property. Um, and then later somebody comes down and, and decides to subdivide it or develop it. Um, it can be done both ways. Um, different jurisdictions do it, um, differently. Here it's a quasi judicial action. It's actually a permit. You're, you're, you're giving a permit. Um, and in a, in a few minutes, we're gonna talk about just how flexible this ordinance is. Um, it's, it's a very unique tool. It's very flexible. But the rest of the things on this list here are, are really sort of plain vanilla things. You gotta submit a vicinity map. You know, tentative landscaping plans. It just runs through the basics of what you have to do to submit, um, to qualify for that preliminary development plan. It's basically, this is what we intend to use this property for. This is how we intend to organize this property.
So, uh, Bill, just to be clear, the two, the two stages of the PUD process, the preliminary development plan, which those eleven items are required for, what will the commission see?
We're gonna get to that in just a second. I wanna, I wanna get through the contents application. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how PUDs are both a, a, a blessing and a curse. But first, really quickly, number eleven. Number eleven, one of the things you have to submit is a rate, written statement as to why the PUD is gonna further the public interest. It's, it's in, not expressly stated here, but implied that there's some kind of a public benefit accruing to the city for, for, for relaxing our zoning rules and allowing the PD to come forward at all. And so the commission has an enormous role in making that decision. Um, the contents of a final development plan have to include everything from the preliminary and then a, a lot more detail as, as articulated and be one through whatever it is. But to Jason's question, what, what makes a PUD so difficult and why staff usually shudders when they hear somebody wants to come in with the PUD is that what I've noticed looking at the PUDs in the file is that they're a, a, just a voluminous list. It just lots of verbiage, very verbose, marketing language related to how this project's gonna be wonderful, which is important. That's, their applicants are trying to, um, demonstrate that they're complying with, uh, the, the rationale as to why the, the permit should be approved. But in the end, let's say a PD is approved and a couple of years later, we're in the middle of implementing this. Inevitably, there's always those minor variations that occur along the way. And if the PUDs are not worded carefully, you wind up having to tease your way through it as a staff and as an implementing group and having to amend these things over and over again. The lot size was off by a square foot. The building height was wrong by half a foot. Cause once you adopt that permit and it says, this is what each of these, how each of these lots is gonna be developed. Now this is how the open space is gonna be organized. This is where access is gonna be derived. And it's all the way down to the final development plan and it's done in a way that's just as big book of words. It gets difficult to understand really what the permit is. The permit I like to see in what I'm proposing as we, you know, not now because we're actively working on, but as we progress with code amendments, I like to propose that at the end, the PUD has to be summarized into a table of standards and, and exhibit that is the actual development plan. So that implementation is eased and you can take all the, you know, important and valuable marketing language away and be left with actually what it is that the commission and council approved. Because sometimes it's hard to discern. You have to read through pros to get at what a setback is. It shouldn't be like that. It should be, it should be very clear. Any questions as we go forward?
Yeah. Is there any like interaction between, um, your office and other permanent grantors? You know, ITD and, you know, the state.
Yeah, that's a great question. So basically when applications are filed at the city, um, we have a, we have a standard routing list that we send, um, applications to, you know, interested parties and agencies. Uh, ITD, there's, um, you know, DEQ, there's a whole, whole range of agencies that receive notice with a date saying, hey, please by such and such a date, please contact us. We have a standard, uh, email list. I think Katie, there's probably how many people on the list? Thirty. Yeah. So there's a lot of folks we reach out to, just as a normal course. Yeah.
And we get to see all that info.
Then yeah, but if they, if they don't comment or send us in anything, then it's not necessarily relevant to share it.
So this ordinance, thank you so much. So this, so this ordinance establishes what has to be submitted. So let's scroll down now next to the next section of this ordinance. Cause it's be, it can be kind of complicated. This is all the things that have to be submitted for the final development plan, just more detailed information. These things just have to, you have to submit the stuff in order for the application to be complete. And let's, let's scroll down and a lot of the stuff, um, is duplicative when you're processing a subdivision map with this. Um, but there's a lot of very detailed information. One thing that, that jumped out at me reading this ordinance that I, I thought I'd just share is, is, um, the final development plan before it's even submitted to the planning commission for consideration. Remember you have the step one is a preliminary plan and then step two is gonna be the final development plan that then goes on to city council. You have to, you have to have, you know, ownership control of the property. Um, a lot of applicants may want to come to you and receive the preliminary approval before they make that investment or take that final step to go on to the, to, uh, processing a final development plan. Because as we just saw, there's a lot more detailed information that's required to be submitted as part of that final development plan. More costly to generate, more costly to, um, to, um, to, to put together. So that's what's submitted, but what actually is the PUD? And this is, this kind of goes to Jason's comment again. What, what actually is it? Uh, well, the ordinance tells us what it is. It doesn't list them like I would list them. But I, I've sort of put this in the, in the, in the margins for you. Number one, and this is what I'm getting at at the end, I'd love to see the ordinance worded at some point that, that establishes that this actually is the permit that, that the commission and council approved. It's, it's one, two, three, four, five, and there's the, there's the map and exhibit to go with it. So it's really easily understood. And all of the language and verbiage that sort of tee up, um, the applicant's intentions and their, what they're trying to create and the feelings around the development they're trying to, um, promote recede into the background after its approval. Because after all, they're, they're usually written and used to garner an approval. Um, what we're looking for as a staff to implement in the end, and I think what commission and council are gonna want to have as part of this process ultimately, is a very clear set of standards of what it actually is approved. So number, number one, what are the permitted land uses? And you can see my red middle notes here, Jason, if you scroll down just a little bit. Um, to the land use question, there's some wiggle room here. That's a pretty powerful, um, wiggle room. If you're in a residential zone and you propose a PUD, you're allowed to do some other things that are not residential. If you're in a commercial zone district, you can, there's a lot of variability to create a mixed use environment. Even though if you look at the zoning table, you know, those uses may not be allowed under that zoning district. It's a very powerful tool and it gets to the idea of, yes, we wanna, we wanna make this tool available for flexibility and good design. But it's implied that there's some kind of a public benefit. There's a reason behind us doing that. And that gets back to that purpose statement, you know, one, two, three, four, five, why we're doing it. So let's go on to number two, what the, so number one, you've got land use. It'd be very clear what is, what is actually being approved. Let's go on to number two. Density through design. This ordinance talks about, um, and what a lot of PU's, the PUDs do is, it's, it's a way to achieve higher density. Um, another way to say that is it's a way to, um, bring a character, uh, to the development that may utilize different lot sizes for different home sizes. Um, to mix that together with, uh, the, the balance of the property with streets and open space, for example. But a lot of what PUDs are about is trying to get more houses in the same acreage, but have that be okay by virtue of its design. So it's a way to increase density. Not every PUDs you see are gonna be asking for increases in density. But it's really common and that's one of the principal reasons why this came about to begin with. Not every site should be, should be designated as a, as a, as a, as a multifamily site. You want to have some flexibility to be able to, to free the designers up to come up with a, with a creative design. Sometimes one part of the parcel is gonna be a little dense and another part maybe less dense. Again, it's a flexibility, but this ordinance speaks to, um, what PUDs are in Sandpoint are. It's land use, it's density through design. Let's look at number three.
Just to put a point on that density through design. Something you may not know, a lot of the public doesn't know, our, our city code does not allow the creation of lots smaller than. You guys know? Five thousand square feet. Unless through the PUD process. So five thousand square feet is not a tiny lot, right? That's a, that's a, a good sized house with a good sized yard around it. But, but there are types of urban development that obviously require much smaller lot sizes. So a PUD, the PUD process would allow the creation of, could allow the creation of lots much smaller than that five thousand square foot minimum.
Again, it's a tool to have some flexibility so you can, we can better achieve what our comp plan is establishing for, for the community's vision, for its, for, for the land resources. Um, this is a great tool. It can be used. It's just, um, there are some guardrails on that in terms of the, the amount of land use flexibility. There's guardrails on the density. In the, in the, the, the five really components of a PUD that this ordinance establishes, number three is, is common open space. If we're going to do this, if we're going to diverge from the residential, single family or multifamily standards, okay, fine. Let's make sure we've got some open space that speaks to, um, how that, that design for that little community that we're creating works. And open space is a, is a key component of it. So you've got land use, density, open space. Let's look at number four. Some performance standards. Again, we're allowing for development patterns that differ from the base zone. What these performance standards are intended to do is address the idea that we recognize as a community that this PUD is being proposed in an area that's surrounded by other stuff. That's not a PUD. Maybe it fits, maybe it doesn't. One way to help address the fact that this will be different, something different next to a single family home, something different next to an industrial area. Whatever that difference is, this ordinance establishes that we have to perform this way. The perimeter of this PUD needs to address some things to help us uh, deal with context sensitivity and appropriate scale and things like that. Twenty-five feet. Um, building setback from all exterior boundaries. All parking and driveway should not be within ten feet. These are the standards that basically suggest if you're gonna take a piece of property and apply a PD to at least the perimeter, uh, we're gonna control very tightly with, um, with these performance standards. Um, what happens within the PUD, a lot of flexibility. This ordinance says around the perimeter, not so much flexibility. Although the commission does have the ability to, um, allow some reductions in some of these standards depending what's presented. It's a statement as to, um, how important, um, fitting in with your environs is. And lastly, PD has got the, the functionality that the. And lastly, PD has got the functionality, that the infrastructure and ease of access that's covered in 1038 and 1039. So sort of nuts and bolts stuff about making sure. That it's a functional PD as it relates to the things that need to work like storm drain systems and access. The approval procedure, now to talk, now we talked a little bit about the application procedure, now what a PUD is. The approval procedure is, can be tough to understand. There, it's, it's again, it's, it's a two-step process, but it's got a couple of different names for that first step. The first step is the preliminary development plan, reading the ordinance. You're going to be confused, you could be confused by this approval in concept, there's a, that, that term is thrown around in the, in the ordinance a bit. But really what it is, is the planning commission, the first step is looking at. The preliminary development plan. And either they're approving this in concept or they're not. And then the second step is going to be the, the final development plan. The other things that are in the, in the approval process.
Yeah, how long does that process normally take? That meeting typically with developers around stuff like this? I mean, are you working with them for quite a bit before it?
So, so let's talk about A, B, and C really quickly, so. Basically. Basically, most of this comes down to the application that's filed in a pre-application meeting right before that. Typically one or two meetings with a developer, they come in and say. This is kind of what we have in mind, sometimes they come in and PUD isn't, isn't the tool that we, we, we think is, 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 uh, is needed. Maybe they just don't understand the zone district standards themselves. Other times it's like, wow, the, the way to get there is a PUD or staff will suggest, yeah, you should, you should use a PUD. Typically one or two meetings to do that. And then there's a lot of hand wringing by staff as they look through this full, these documents to try to decipher and, 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 and assign. Compliance to this lengthy ordinance. But the staff work upfront is typically a couple of meetings. And I'll, and I'll typically meet with, with Brandon and talk about infrastructure issues on a multiple times. So it's staff work where there's a dozen or more meetings. Even spinning out from one pre-app.
Well, and there could be months between meeting one and meeting two, depending on how prepared the applicant was.
That's right. These can be complex, typically larger pieces of property, complicated. Integration with its surroundings, for example, that, that can, that can generate quite a bit of discussion. Which is basic infrastructure issues generate discussion. That's mostly what we spend our time talking about during the, the pre-app meeting is why, why, what's, what's the reason for the PUD? I've seen PU's. Fortun dozens and dozens and dozens of them, I've seen PU's. The last PA worked at another jurisdiction, the developer wanted a one foot difference between the standing zoning district and the. And what they're proposing in the, in the PUD and I, I just said, no, no, we're not, we're not going to spend all of this time for one foot. There's got to be another way to do this. And, and that's, that's the thing about PU's, that's why, that's why planners, it's sort of the industry thing, we love them and we hate them. We love them for the same reason that applicants and commissions and council, I mean, sometimes you get some wonderful, wonderful outcomes of PU's. But they can be abused, they just want a little, you know, why not comply? Why not comply with the base zone district standards? That's the first question I ask, why, why can't you comply with it? What, what about it don't you like? Oh, we really want to do this kind of product, but needs to be in a smaller lot, okay, let's talk about that. The first question I always have is, you know, what about the ordinance does is not working for you? And we, and that's sort of the point of departure. And it quickly goes to, you know, what we see as staff and why there's some really creative things that people are bringing here, I can totally see why you want to do a PUD. So let's go on.
Well, just for clarification, what they're typically used for and most useful for is to blend uses. So that you can have single family residential, multifamily and some commercial, a coffee shop, an accountant's office in a single project. Whereas the underlying base zoning is all residential and that wouldn't be allowed. So, so the beauty of the PUD, if used correctly, is to allow that sort of. Community, instant community development that has resources available and a variety of housing types. But we don't always get those applications.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll walk you through when the, when the first, the first PUD we work on together comes through, we'll, we'll be really deliberate about, you know, the application, what the PUD is, what the process steps are. We're going to, we're going to make sure we answer all your questions and we're really clear with that. I will be honest, one, one thing that I, I came across in this ordinance is this, this interesting reference to the. The conditional use permit criteria, but the section of the code that's listed is a procedural section, it's not really the finding section. So I'm going to have a little chat with Fonda tomorrow about, about that. Just to, just to add a little bit of clarity, because we want to make sure we come in and procedurally, we're, we're, we're hitting the mark on everything we're supposed to be looking at.
Well, and we have to be clear when we give you the standards to evaluate, because a PUD is eligible under Idaho code for regulatory takings analysis. So a denial of a PUD or conditions placed by the governing board that the applicant believes to be unreasonable are subject to a regulatory takings claim.
Yeah, and what's interesting about this particular page we're looking at right now is that F. Suggests a set of findings. But G or H rather, where I've underlined and read there, actually states the findings. So I'm going to, I'm going to do a little bit of work with our, our legal team on, on teasing that apart a little bit. But right there highlighted in the bubble is step two, that's the final development plan. And in your role as a commission, you're making a, a recommendation, but again. It's two-step process, step one preliminary, step two is final, that preliminary is a big deal to the commission because you're basically. Given a green light to, to, to move forward. And that's why when we conduct those hearings, it's going to be really important to. You know, chair just ask questions as you go through legal staff about just where we are in the procedure or how, how that, those hearings have to be. Conducted, that quasi judicial role you're going to be in.
Phil, have you seen preliminary applications be considered and have your? Commissions send the applicant back to do some additional work and bring it back to them again?
Yeah, I have. I, thanks for bringing it up, that, I, you, you, you are, I think I've mentioned a couple of times now, you have a very significant role. PUD is one of these, one of these particular permits in the code where you have a lot of authority, kind of like a conditional use permit. In this case, it's even more because you're really talking about community design, not just a land use matter where not a particular land use fits on a, on a parcel. This is community design and. You, you have been bestowed with the authority to help weigh in on what that means. And if you're looking at application that you think can be improved based on the testimony you hear, the things you see in the staff report, your own evaluation of the project. That preliminary approval and. The preliminary development plan, that approval and concept is your time to communicate as a commission. And then with one voice speak back to the applicant and staff of what you'd like to see changed. And the applicant is either going to adhere to that or not. But it's also really important, I think like Fonda was mentioning, during those hearings, it's not going to do a lot of good for each individual commission member to say. Staff, I like this or I don't like this, staff, I like this, I don't like that, and each person's got a different idea, it's, it's really. Looking to your left and right and forming an opinion as a commission. As to, as to what could be improved or not. With what you're looking at. And then these are the actual findings, fact that have to be made by city council.
Real quick. Number one, the proposed development can be initiated within two years, does that mean that they only have two years to do something or otherwise the PUD is no longer active?
You know, that's, that's, I'm glad you're picking up on that, it's. In as much as this, this ordinance has flexibility for a developer to come with some creative designs, there's a lot of relaxation of land use regulations. This is, you know, put your money where your mouth is finding, so some kind of documentation that. The collection of on and off-site improvements for infrastructure in the site development itself can be initiated, there's not such a burden. On the project that two years, it couldn't be started, you, you, the commissions, I get, what I, what I read by this finding is that. There's an understanding that this is a plausible, possible project, with based on everything you see in the record. And the idea that you can go longer, I believe there's a provision for this to. Have the ability to be extended, but I have to look at that more closely.
But it also means that it can expire.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, I mean, it doesn't say this proposed development must be initiated, it says can be initiated, well. What are you initiating?
You're looking for something from the applicant during the public hearing that makes you comfortable that they, standing here, have the ability to begin that public infrastructure within two years.
Well, yeah, for example, if there is a traffic study commissioned and part of the record shows that there's a lot of these offsite impacts for infrastructure. Maybe some of those, you know, implicate permitting from another agency, for example. And you couple that with maybe some storm drain dishes or a welding permit has to be obtained. You start to look at the collection of things that might be the encumbrances to what would otherwise be a straightforward development. Beginning to question, boys, this, can this even happen? And then, and then the two years, the trigger comes up and, and, and why, why do these expire? Why, why, why would a, why would a permit expire? And it expires. Very simply for the fact that cities are dynamic, they change. There could be a new council that comes in that wants a new standards, it could be a new community center, they want to see a different look and feel for things. And we change our rules and policies, if you have a permit that sits on the shelf for 50 years. And someone comes back and says, well, I'm going to build this, you know, dynamite factory, that was a heat idea a long time ago. Maybe not, maybe not so good today.
But it's just, I'm not saying I have experience, but I certainly know of them, where approved PU's can become a commodity. You know, people will take it through PUD and then they put it up for sale.
That's right.
Well, and they become very difficult to manage when the original developer starts selling them off in phases.
Oh yeah, it can be very.
They're intended under Idaho code to remain under single ownership until built out entirely. And that's not happening in a number of instances around our communities. And so they, they do, they come get the PUD approved and then they phase the subdivisions within the PUD and sell off those phased subdivisions. And it becomes very difficult to manage. The common area that they bargained for.
Yep.
The, the public infrastructure that is privately maintained inside the PUD, it becomes a, a governmental management nightmare.
Yeah, we have, we have some real live examples. Where. We're challenged by just the nature of, you know, phasing. To ensure that what makes the PUD special to begin with is actually going to be implemented. Because if you're not careful with the transfer of ownership in the way. For example, a development agreement is worded or the conditions of approval or the way the PUD works. All of those special things, the, the things that make the PUD special. What if they're relegated to the very last phase and now you've got a developer who owns a piece of this thing? Is now has the burden of all of the goodies that we're supposed to accrue from the PUD. Now, now you've got yourself a real problem. And what if those things are, you know, infrastructure related? What if some of them are public infrastructure that happens to run through private property? Oh, now we've got ourselves a real can of worms because. It's easier than you might know to avoid having to comply with the rules. And, and unfortunately, it takes one or two bad examples for the city to be, you know, a little shy with. Or, or want to be more deliberate, I should say, with its development processes so that we. Were ensuring that the outcomes are what was intended. So we're just being very careful with some of this stuff, so.
And who's enforcing it 10 years down the road?
That's exactly right. So all that shouldn't scare us away from PU's, that just means staff's got sharpened its pencil and make sure that we're, you know. You know, bringing stuff forward that's got, that, that's as complete as can possibly be so that. Can it be done within two years, well, this is what that means. And we, we have a really good idea of, of what it takes to implement something. Very, very complicated with, with larger projects phased, it can be tough.
Would you have a, some sort of document, legal document that if the ownership changes hands? That it comes back before the PNC and that they agree to all the original. Provisions of the PNC and that they are legally responsible to do so.
Well, there's only so many restrictions we can put in the master development agreement related to that.
Okay.
And we can't, we don't have a code or case law strong enough to prevent them from transferring ownership. So then we have to build in all of these other mechanisms to just maintain the integrity of the intention of the PUD from the beginning.
And, and that's why. This ordinance, although I haven't spoken to it. Talks a lot about how PU's are commonly processed together with, with a subdivision map. The subdivision map has a whole other set of statutes and tools at the city's disposal to ensure that we get. You know, mainly infrastructure and things like that done. Correctly, if you have a PUD that is for a multifamily or a commercial development that is not intended to be subdivided through a, through a subdivision process. That places an additional burden on the final development plan to be rock solid. As it relates to things you would normally get out of a subdivision process if that were being processed. So. Blessing and a curse, these PU's, that's why we want to be careful going into them, I don't want to scare people off with PU's, PU's are great things, you just have to be careful with how we do them.
I mean, I have to say, I mean, if you're not going to let them sell part of their, part of it, they're never going to get financing for these kind of projects, I mean. But they're never going to be able to carry a note for five years, well, finish the development.
Yeah.
No, you're right, you're right.
That's right. Let's see, I think I have a couple more notes going down here and then we'll, well, I'll wrap it up because I know it's, it's getting a little bit late. This is interesting, so. Sort of the, the last comment I have here is. In the, in the approval process, there is this very interesting. Provision that I've highlighted here, the design review approval. Let's, we're going to read this one, we, we haven't read anything together, we're going to read this one, all projects receiving a PD permit. As a condition of said permit shall be required to submit and receive design review approval for each structure to be constructed within the project in accordance. With the approved final development plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So. This relates to sort of a larger concept I've been. In discovery with, with Jason and Fonda, I've talked a little bit with planning commission about this, went to city council and told them, in, in the context of my initial sort of. Review of the zoning ordinance. And that is, it gets at the deliberateness with, with how we make decisions, if, if we're going to approve a final development plan. And it's, it's this collection, this compendium, this booklet of all these nice stuff. What this says is you can't just run off the building permit. You actually have to come, every single permit needs to come and get this design review approval. What exactly is that, there's no, nothing in the code otherwise that says what design review approval is. We're going to have a robust, fun discussion as a team about whether or not that's an actual permit. And. It, it, it's easy, so yeah, yeah, just to do, to do that as part of the building permit process, but that's not what it says. That's not what it says.
Are there guidelines for that?
So we're going to, we're going to talk about this as, as a team, this is more of a, this is more of a thing for staff, honestly, because it's, this is. The reason why I'm highlighting it is because thi- this is the assurance provision in the ordinance that says if, if one of these gets approved. There's going to be this, this double check that, that building permit that's submitted is in conformance with it, with the PUD. Because remember, this could be years down the road.
This, this is one, I mean, this is the first PUD we've worked on as a team. Bill just kind of pointed this out to me for the first time today, having read this code many, many times, this one never really jumped out to me until you brought it up, but. Just thinking out loud here in front of the commission. Could this mean, for example, a, a PUD is approved with the subdivision, creates, let's say, 100 new lots?
Right.
The original developer goes and builds 15 of those. Decides it's time to move on, sells off 85 of them. You've now got 85 different owners of these lots, or you've got, let's say, one big owner of 85 lots. Years go by, they come back and they're like, okay, we're ready to build on these lots that were approved 10 years ago under PUD. Is this just, does this just mean that before we issue a building permit, we're going to go back to the original PUD and make sure that what you're building, what was, is what was promised in that original PUD? Unlike other lots in Sandpoint where you can submit a building permit for, application for any kind of structure, as long as it meets our setbacks and our lot coverage. We want to make sure that 10 years down the road, what the eventual owner of these created lots builds is what was approved through the PUD process. Not some idea that they come up with 10 years later.
That's right. And, and that's the blessing, the curse, there, there are benefits and burdens to, to a PUD, that, yes. So what, what this says is, if we're going to take down two acres, 10 acres and put a PD on it. As that develops over time. Everything has to be in accordance with that PUD, it's a permit. The, the, the council said you are allowed to do this and this only. And if someone wants to come in and have. Some deviation. You have to amend the permit through commission and council. That's why I implore applicants, when they apply for PUD. Find the way to introduce the flexibility in the implementation, so you don't, so you're not red taped to death.
Well, Bill, I, there's one more example, actually, it dawned on me, we, we've encountered this, I'm not going to give any specific examples, but a PUD that let's say was approved 20 years ago. Somebody comes along, does have no idea that they live.
Oh yeah, yes, oh yeah.
As far as they know, they live in any other Sandpoint neighborhood. As far as they know, they live in any other Sandpoint neighborhood. They come in and submit a building permit application.
I know which one you're talking about.
Want to build a garage that conforms to this zoning district setback requirements for garages with the property line. In our approval of that, before we even do the building permit review, we realize that this is within a PUD that was approved twenty-five years ago. And there is a, how many feet setback for the entire perimeter of all PUDs? Twenty-five feet setback requirement that was agreed on by that developer twenty-five years ago. Sorry, sir, you cannot build up to ten feet because you're in a PUD. I'm in a what? You're in a PUD and, and people have no idea they have bought a house that's within. Basically a micro zoning district that was created by a developer twenty-five years ago, and they have less rights than they would because of that.
Yeah, it's, it's, and that's why if there's a plat.
I don't.
I was going to say.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, and it's on the face of the plat. So this, this was an interesting case. It's happened to be my second zoning question I got at the front counter. It was like my third day, I was like, it's like, oh, a simple garage question, yeah. Let's help you out. And next thing you know, I'm like, oh, boy, this is fun. But, uh, we, we found a way through that in, in explaining it. But, but the point is, um, uh, that this is a really important provision. Not everything's going to be platted. The face of the plat should say that this is a PUD. You know, it's, it's, it's just, it's just a helpful note on the PD that, 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 hey, there's this, there's this really big permit that applies to this property. But if it's not, if it's not something that's platted, um, this provision is just something that's in staff. You've got to be aware that these things are, um, are required. Ultimately, what I want to do with our GIS system is, is in as much as we have a zoning layer for the city, I'm trying to get a layer of all the PUDs that are proved. Because right now it's like, well, where are all the PUDs? Um, one staff, well, I know of one, another staff member, I know of another one, so we're. I think this was a PUD, so we're, we're getting organized. I mean, at one, at one point, the staff members who are here knew it all, right? And at some point, I'll, I'll know where they all are, but I want to put it on a map so everybody knows where they are. Um, so enterprise and real estate agents can advise their clients that, oh, you're in a special area.
Can you clear that from title?
Can you clear PUD?
Yeah.
No, no. It's a, it's a permit that, that's there forever.
End of PUD with the current property owners all coming together to agree to it.
Remember earlier when I said PUD is, uh, some cities do it as, 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 you know, a legislative act of zoning and some do it as a quasi judicial permit? The reason why is because you really, it, it can go either way. It, it, it can be a, a legislative zoning district, which is, you know, it's not something can.
State code, Idaho code gives cities a lot of discretion on designing PUDs how they wish. You're not even required to allow for them.
Yeah, you don't have to have them. You can, um, if they create too many problems or.
There's actually, look at N, that's a really important one there to kind of conclude with, right?
Yeah, that's. Another layer. The development agreement layer, that's a whole nother conversation. But, but. To get to commission member. Ryan Mars' comment about. You know, the developability that's within two years. The development agreement as a signed contract between the city council and the property owner. Sometimes can bring a lot of clarity to things that, that, um, uh, your code can't really, um, doesn't really speak to. It's a contract. So, um, that can, that can bring some closure to some open ended questions on things like implementation. So, but Chair, that's all I had. I just wanted to give you just, uh, just a quick read through together, sort of a little bit less formal format of what this is all about. So thank you so much for your attention and time on this and, um, happy to answer your questions or. Here at the office anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, will hear any general matters or announcements from staff? Anybody's ready? Do commissioners have anything they'd like to address or any general questions for staff during our roundtable?
Yeah, the, uh, you guys did a good job on this, uh, initial thing with the, uh, parking fees and stuff. Thank you. It was nice. I mean, you, you can look at it. I mean, me, I could tear it apart, but I can look at it. You know, I can read it. It's good. Nice one to say so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. This is a, this is a hot button topic and it's, uh, right. I mean, we, we all see what's going on out there in the public. And unfortunately, I will, I will remain unbiased relative to this. But what I, I think we've heard some pretty good assertions that relative to our role in this is to arbit within these guidelines of the planning and zoning code. And if we go back to the original Avril Resort, the first thing that came in front was this condition to say, if we don't make a change to the planning and zoning code. Then the Avril Resort has to build five feet away from the sidewalk, given how it's zoned. Them's the rules. So if you don't like it, change the rules, but this isn't the, like, that's not what. There was no backdrop to say that they can't do it. In fact, if we didn't approve it, you'd have absolutely no parkland down there. So, um, I, I would say with the announcement that there's resorts and a scaled down hotel planned. Getting out in front of like, there is opportunity for public. You know. Discourse within this and it's within these, these rooms. And the city's done a great job in making all this stuff as transparent as, as possible. And I think maybe even sharpening the pencil around that a little bit more could probably do some service. Because, you know, put the pain where it belongs. This is not like, we have guidelines with, which we, we can make these decisions. Luckily, we have a comp plan, which gives us a pretty good backstop on a lot of this stuff. So, um, again, appreciate the transparency. And I, I think there's probably going to be, like, relative to the 1.8 million dollar conversation. I have not done the research, but my guess is there's probably, it backed up against some code that here's like, this is what, what, what the rules are. It probably doesn't come to that, but that's something that we're probably going to have to answer for.
The other thing I, I just want to add, as you bring that up. In future meetings, we need to be very mindful that that CUP is a living, breathing permit that can come back for amendment. And we should not allow any further public comments specific to the hotel. We really need to cut that off. And so.
Where's the sort of guideline there? Like, what's the, like, as soon as it comes up, just say, hey, look, that.
It's your, your chairman just.
Gotcha.
Well, actually, we should probably just add it to the public, the, the script. That, um, we can't have any comment on. Ending applications or actually agenda item matters. I don't think that was in there. And then the, the chairman can just respectfully say, we appreciate your comment. We just can't allow comments specific to an application. And because that could potentially come back for an amended CUP at some point, we, we need to not have public comment on it right now.
Even though the public comment is just comment, we're not debating it or.
It's very specific to that application. So imagine. An applicant in that situation gathering all of those comments. And if it comes back before you for a decision point, you can only rely on what you get in that public hearing. So now it's clouded with other public comments.
Can I just mention that the person who put those condo units live was here tonight? Um, and so that's the kind of, yeah, maybe he's gathering that kind of information. Yeah.
So just, 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 just be careful.
Yeah. What was the 1.8 million dollar question?
Talk, it was relative to the, what should have been charged per parking lot citing some code that I have no idea about.
Yeah.
So four hundred thousand versus, yeah, something like that. Yeah.
But we don't need to discuss any of that anymore.
Yeah.
And frankly, that's outside of this commission anyway.
Yeah.
It won't be though, if the, the state decides to come back for an amendment to that CUP.
Yeah, um, I would re, I would, I agree with Commissioner Simmons that. There's still, I know, a fairly alarming rate of the public with some pretty outlandish claims about. I mean, I feel like some people in the city have libel claims that they could seriously make. I mean. For sure, they could make about accusations of, uh. You know, fraud and those kinds of things, um, even no matter how untrue they are. They carry a lot of weight with, um, a lot of people's ears who aren't reading and aren't doing the research. And I don't know the exact way to like combat that because it is really popular to just kind of believe, you know, sensational things. Because a lot of people want to fight, you know, big government or small government or whatever. But it, um, it is tough to not comment on stuff like that, except to say maybe. You know, those are crazy claims, you know, where's your proof? You know, and then that's about it. And that's about the extent that I go to because I feel like there is, as a, as somebody who knows a lot better. There are ways to, um, to be a voice of, you know, rational thought. Although it is tough to, to stay, um, you know, very unbiased or to not cloud my own judgment. Because some of the stuff that does come up, it is like. What's, I mean, I mean, I don't know everything, you know, I, I don't know exactly everything that's going on, but, um. It doesn't, it's not a good thing for a community to have that type of stuff to where people actually show up here and will say it in this room. And, and we've seen that, so I don't know exactly how, but maybe some thought to like, you know. And it, and it's also clouded this parking plan, which like you've, you've mentioned, this is like a five year project, you know, that's finally coming around. So, and it, and it's done a disservice to the, to the work that you guys are doing now, so. Cause frankly, all the, all the parking comments we've heard have been fairly positive. And surprisingly, because I, I felt like there'd be a lot more backlash to that, but, um. Yeah, I don't know how to go about it. I know maybe the, the city, um, social media pages could, could help that a little bit, which that's sometimes a slippery slope too. But I think the city, um, Facebook page has actually been, it's been pretty good. Uh, better than most, so. And then, I don't know, maybe something in the, in the utility mailer that, um, just gives a little bit of a. You know, an update about what's going on and, and just kind of keep the focus on, on the parking plan. Because the more we can answer the question of, you know, what's, you know, what's the com, what's the co-mingling of the parking plan and this other thing? The more we can answer it with, you know, the facts, then I think, um, it should help.
It's fo- focusing on the, I mean, I've been, I've been trying to focus on the existing known problem that we have in the community.
Yeah.
Right? The parking study revealed a problem. I think you all know, I, I was an economist before this job and I'm, this is exactly the kind of problem economists are trained to solve, right? It's a planning problem, but there's a simple economic solution and that's all we're trying to do here is just create a system of incentives to. Resolve an existing known problem in the community. That the, and, you know, quite frankly, that the idea that parking could be any worse at city beach than it already is. You know, that's, that's why the survey that we, I'm working on is, and Wayne's seen it, Wayne's given me feedback on it. The, the, I think you guys saw it on the last agenda as well. It's really about the satisfaction with the status quo. And I don't hear a lot of satisfaction in the community with the status quo.
Is, is that survey only going to be available to city residents or?
I think question one will be, what's your address? That's another thing, like, who are we representing here?
Yeah, no.
I'll just add, I think it's, it's good to see the way you're rolling out the parking kind of concept and proposal with the, like, lots of meetings, different committee. With all the different committee meetings as well, and that is a great opportunity, I think, for people. Maybe not to reach out to you directly, but they maybe know somebody on these committees and so that's kind of spreads the network out.
And every one of those committees is full of representatives from the community. Their citizen advisory board, that's why the mayor reformed them. So we are using them to advise us in our development of city policy.
It's a good new rollout from the last few months that's occurring, so. I think, thanks for the kind of overview on just the legalities and how these meetings work. It's helpful.
We, we do think that this is going to be a pretty busy year for planning and zoning. Not necessarily on the, on the permit front. We don't have a huge forecast beyond two right now that we think you'll see in the next couple of months. But, you know, Bill's going to be getting to work pretty soon on, on code amendments and zoning ordinances that we're gonna, are going to have to come to you. In fact, there's going to be one, I think at your March meeting as well, a code amendment along with the PUD.
More of an engineering thing, but yes.
But it is in our, in title ten, so.
Well, and it's a natural rhythm for code amendments now because the comprehensive plan was just adopted. So the, your, your code changes come out of your newly adopted comprehensive plan and its direction. So it's, it's a very natural part of the rhythm.
The, the mayor did just today, just this afternoon, uh, join a meeting with our planning team and redirected our attention on the city council's prior, uh. What directive to focus on downtown historic preservation codes as well. So we, we do, um, have that in our work plan for this summer and going into fall as well. Those would be some pretty big ones that are going to get a lot of attention in the community, but all of that will be coming to planning and zoning.
Along, along those lines, then is there anything in the coming meetings, like the next few months, just to kind of set up those conversations around downtown? Maybe look, looking back at what's been done already, informational discussions?
I, I think the kind of lessons that Bill's been giving on things like PUDs, like, I think we could be doing that. You kind of doing a deep dive of our existing code as far as, uh, commercial A. What, what are the design guidelines we already have? I don't know, Bill, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's a great question. When I, when I think about, um. How to approach, you know, the commercial, uh, A and the historic preservation. I, my first brought to, um, title nine, one, four of the code where we need to do a little bit of tightening on the permits that are going to be issued. When new development happens. And by tightening, like I mentioned in my sort of zoning overview with the commission a couple of weeks ago. Just strengthening the findings, being really clear that permits are actually issued, things like that. So that, that's going to enable us to squarely address contact sensitivity wherever the permit is issued, including downtown. That's step one. But beyond that. Where my mind is right now are, are two separate things to address downtown. One is, uh, drawing an area around, the commission council drawing an area around downtown, whether it's commercial A or some subset of commercial A. And saying we're going to have some. General downtown design guidelines. In other words, these are the types of guidelines you'd like to see, uh, that, that, um, express outcomes in terms of what, you know, are typical in downtown. Our code already has a lot of stuff in it. Let's see if we can add some more. And see if that's what the council wants. Next to that, there are a series of historic buildings that this committee has, has recognized. And what tools do we want to use to encourage preservation of those buildings? And that's a, a separate ordinance, um, and a separate set of guidelines. Because if you have a vacant lot, you want to have basically some downtowny type design guidelines to help make sure that it fits in its context of downtown. Using the right materials, things like that, the right fenestration patterns and treatments and architectural details. But if you have a historic building. We're going to be for, as a committee, for the first time, asking ourselves, um, threshold questions. Do we want to require a review? Of somebody doing something to their building that doesn't require a building permit? Thou shalt not stucco over your beautiful brick building ordinance. So we're going to be asking ourselves that in the context of looking at specific historic buildings. And that's what historic preservation ordinances ultimately arrive at, are trying to protect and enhance the, um, the resources that we have. And so we've got lots of threshold questions to address when we're looking at that. Other cities have done this. So we're, we're going to be bringing some things forward, but we've got to get our head around what we think is probably the best way to achieve what the comp plan says. And then talk to the public, talk to, go to these committees, go, go walk through this, come to commission, talk through it, adjust it, tweak it, change it, scrap it, start over, whatever we have to do. But we, we want to generate something for people to sink their teeth into. So that's what we're going to be doing. It's going to take us a number of months to get there.
Okay, I'm going to call that the meeting. Uh, with no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at eight PM.
Thanks, Chair.